Okay, let's call to order the March 16 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The first item on our agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Teta.
Here.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Sernick.
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Flagg.
Here.
Commissioner Bruno.
Here.
Councilmember Finley.
Here.
All right, next on our item, or on our agenda, is any items from Development Services manager, Joni Marsh. She, I don't know where she's at. We'll give her a chance. Dan, did you see Joni outside?
She's outside.
Oh, she's outside? Okay, she's coming.
[inaudible]
Okay. Okay, she has nothing. So we'll move on to item four, which is the public invited-to-be-heard session of our agenda. If somebody wants to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda, they're welcome to do so. Do we have anybody signed up? Nobody signed up. If there's somebody in the audience who would like to come forward and speak about something not on the agenda, now's a good time to do it. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public invited-to-be-heard. We need to approve two sets of minutes, the first being the February 17, 2016 set of minutes. Any discussion? Any motion to approve from somebody who is there?
I'll move that we approve the minutes for February 17.
Okay. Second, motion to approve by Commissioner Pollan, second from Commissioner Teta. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes for February 24, 2016, discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Commissioner Goldberg, second. Second by Commissioner Bruno. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes pass. We now move on to item number six, the Bond Farm rezoning and concept plan amendment with Senior Planner Katie Guthrie, who will do our first presentation.
and Development Services. Tonight, I'm here to present the Bond Farm rezoning request and concept plan amendment. The request is to rezone a property from RMD, which is residential mixed density, to PUDR, which is planned unit development residential. And the request also includes a concept plan amendment. Specifically, the Planning Commission's role tonight is to make a recommendation on the rezoning request and the concept plan amendment. The recommendation is taken to City Council. This slide shows the property. It's located at 1313 Spruce Avenue, and it is within the Bond Farm registered neighborhood group area. Little bit of information about the parcel itself. It was annexed into the city in January of 2006. At that time, it had a zoning designation of residential mixed density. The site itself is approximately 5.89 acres, and it has a comprehensive plan designation of medium-density As I mentioned, this project includes two components. The first is the rezoning request. So they're asking to go from RMD to PUDR. PUDR meets, it has the intent to meet medium-density residential land use, and it has approximately eight units per acre. One of the advantages of PUDR is that it encourages innovation and allows for flexibility in both the use and development standards. So the concept plan amendment is the second component, and I'll briefly go over that. What you see before you now is the original concept plan that was approved with the annexation in 2006. This concept plan shows a park in the northeast corner with a trail going along the, a public trail going to the south along the east property line. Also has some open space in that bottom corner, and it shows a continuation of Sherman Street as a point of access for the development. This is the proposed concept plan that has the amendment that is before you tonight. So again, it has indication of a park in the northeast corner. It has a community-supported agricultural operation on the southern third of the property. It also has mixed-density residential covering the balance of the property. Overall, the density has not changed from the original concept plan. The concept plan amendment addresses four specific changes. The first is a change in the zoning designation from RMD to PUDR. It also has a change in the street alignment. They're proposing a private drive to access the site versus a continuation of Sherman Street as a public street. Another change is the park size. On the original concept plan and part of the annexation agreement, it was indicated that there would be a park of about two acres, or up to two acres, and this current concept plan shows a park that is .85 acre. The last change on this concept plan amendment is the location of the public trail. It has shifted from the east property line to the west property line. Development review, the development review committee reviewed and provided comments on these applications to the applicant, who then made revisions. So as revised, the DRC supports a conditional approval of this application. The applicable review criteria for this application is 1502-040A through E. These are our common review standards that are applicable to all major development applications, such as a rezoning. As well, review criteria 1502-050H5C is one criteria that's additional for rezonings specifically. Staff's analysis of these, of how the project complies with these review criteria is in your packet, is in the communication, and we believe that the rezoning request and concept plan amendment both meet all applicable review criteria. There are several components of the public involvement process. The first was a neighborhood meeting in September of last year. Approximately, well, not approximately, but 24 residents signed in to that neighborhood meeting. A summary of their comments and concerns is included in your packet. Notice of application and notice of this public hearing were both sent to all property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject property, and then a total of 34 letters and/or emails have been received to date. There's 33 letters in your packet, and one additional was received today, and I believe that was passed out. So to conclude, staff recommends conditional approval of the Bond Farm rezoning and concept plan amendment. I find that the review criteria 1502-040A through E and 1502-050H5C have been met. This conditional approval, the recommendation for conditional approval is found in PZR 2016-9B. I'd be happy to answer any questions of the Commission at this time.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions for Katie at this time? Commissioner Pollan?
Yeah, in the communication that we're given, it noted out the different units and what they were. One of the things here is the live-work units. Can you describe that a little bit?
Chairman and Commissioner Pollan, this information was provided as part of the application from the applicant. So the live-work components, as I understand them, are going to be approximately 1,000 square feet and combine both, you know, habitable space and workspace for residents of that same space. They are proposed to be located along the front of Spruce Street in the current concept plan.
Do we know what kind of work is going to be allowed there, and what kind of work is not going to be allowed in those units?
Chairman and Commissioner Pollan, when you look at the allowed uses within the PUDR zoning designation, that's why we would look for those. So in the Development Code 1503-060E, nope, sorry, B, B1, it does talk about the different kinds of uses that are allowed. So within PUDR, there, it's principal permitted, limited, and conditional uses that are allowed in all of the R1, R2, and R3. And in addition, there's commercial uses that are allowed. Those commercial uses have additional requirements or restrictions on them, like the commercial use has to be secondary to the principal use as the residence. The commercial use has to fall within the neighborhood center definition that comes from the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, and the commercial uses are primarily, are designed to primarily serve the residents of the PUD. So if you wanted to understand more about what those particulars are, I mean, we could look at the use tables in the Development Code and look at R1, R2, and R3, and then see. But in general, it's, you know, I think we could look for studios, daycare, professional offices, perhaps personal services. The space is small, so that's my understanding of the intention of those live-work units at this point. The applicant, I suspect, can, will either provide more information in his presentation or be able to more fully answer your question.
Any other questions? Commissioner Goldberg?
Hi, Katie. Thanks for your presentation. Katie, it says very clearly that the staff recommends conditional approval, as indicated by 2016-9B. Is the condition that you're suggesting specifically relating to the pedestrian, pedestrian trail?
Chairman and Commissioner Goldberg, yes. The intent of the condition is to ensure that that trail is built at a time, that's built in conjunction with the development of the residential component, so that it's not something that is left, is a later phase or lingers or whatnot. And I don't know that, I wouldn't say that the applicant contends that particular condition. It just was something that we weren't able to fully discuss, and I mean, I think he's fine with the condition as dated, so.
But that path is, that trail connection is a priority for the city?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Katie, I have a question for you. The property owner is different from the applicant. Two different entities. So I take it that the applicant is eventually going to purchase the property, or what's going on there? If, if the PUDR is approved, then what if the land does not end up in ownership of the cohousing that's being proposed? And what would then be possible to develop there by the current owner? If the sale, if I'm correct, that a sale is pending to the cohousing group, if that sale were to fall through, then, but we've already approved the PUDR, then what are the current property owner's options in terms of development?
Chairman Sernick, I think you're correct in that the applicant, you are correct, the applicant is not the current property owner. The Bond, the Bond family currently owns the property, and I believe they are in contract with the applicant's development company. The exact relationship between the applicant and the larger company, I believe he works for the larger company, but perhaps that's a question he can answer more directly. But I think that if tonight you approve the rezoning and the concept plan amendment, and for whatever unforeseen reason that deal goes south, the property would still be zoned PUDR, which is a very viable option for this, you know, sort of this infill piece of property. So it's not, I don't believe staff sees it as a detriment if Commission approves the rezoning and concept plan amendment tonight, and then something else happens, there's a new owner or the Bond family now has this property, because it currently is owned RMD. And although there's some different caveats to it, it's, you know, it's going to be developed, and PUDR just allows for some innovation and flexibility. It still has a residential component to it. So I don't think there's anything to be concerned of based on future real estate transaction that we don't have any control over.
Okay. Another question in terms of where we're at with the concept plan. So you showed us the original concept plan, and that's the one that's currently on file, is that correct?
Yeah, the black and white one.
The black and white one, okay. And so that black and white concept plan does not indicate, like, location of the residences. Certainly didn't indicate any location of retail or commercial that I saw. So yeah, it's fairly general. So the concept plan, the color one, is the proposed, and everything within that concept plan is being proposed, correct? Because that, this concept plan, the color one, has not yet been approved or filed. I just want to be clear on that.
Yes, Chairman Sernick. The black and white one is what's currently on file and has been recorded with the annexation agreement. So the concept plan amendment is to take the black and white one to the color one. The idea of a concept plan in conjunction with an annexation agreement is just to be very conceptual, not to be very specific. That's what a development plan is for, and that would be the next step. So what's shown here on the color of concept plan is, you know, the conceptual location of the various uses and the densities. This concept plan, I would say, probably shows more than what we normally see on concept plans. I mean, everyone can be slightly different, but, you know, this concept plan is at least 10 to 15 years old, and probably more in line with what we saw 10 or 15 years ago on concept plans. The color one just does have more detail. I think that's also an indication of where the applicant is in their process in terms of developing the plans for this property, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Flagg?
You, on the new concept plan, you do show that, and you talk about moving the trail from the east to the west side, and I wondered why that was necessary and how it now will connect to the rest of the trail system in the city. Additionally, you're decreasing the park size, and why was that necessary?
Chairman and Commissioner Flagg, so the trail was moved from the east property line to the west property line by the applicant, and I think it supports an alignment in the Parks and Rec master plan for a trail that would eventually lead to Isaac Walton. As I indicated, a trail was shown on the original black and white concept plan. I think that earlier Parks and Rec ideas was that a trail could be built on the east side. I think some recent developments, or I shouldn't say developments, excuse me, opportunities to create a trail south of the Bond property have come about. So park supports the location on the west side, and I think overall, just planning wanted to see a connection made as part of this, this overall development. The park size reduction is a complicated issue. This property is, as I mentioned, the annexation agreement that's been recorded has some language in there that talks about the city having the first right of refusal to buy up to two acres on this site to develop a park in the future. Staff took this application to City Council in February and got direction from them to remove that language. The two-acre language in the existing annexation agreement was for the city to purchase that much land. So the annexation agreement, which is, you know, a direct agreement between the City Council and the property owners, is still being negotiated. But the language, the direction that we got from Council on the language is to replace that two-acre opportunity to buy with receiving a .85 acre dedication in addition to, and then planning staff and park staff has added an additional dedication for the trail. So the park size has been reduced in part, in response to direction from the City Council, and I think in part by a request from the applicant to have a smaller park, given the fact that, you know, almost a third or more of the property will be in agricultural production.
Commissioner Bruno?
Yeah, I was wondering about the house that's on the property. It says it is designated to be relocated. That's not going to be relocated on this, within these boundaries, right? It's meant to find another home, basically.
Chairman and Commissioner Bruno, yes. The applicant has submitted a letter that the house will be relocated several streets north. I thought I had the letter in here. If you give me just a sec. It's intended to be relocated at 2904 Alta Street. So the, an engineer has submitted a letter saying what the intentions are and some of the prep work that'll need to be done to make the site ready to receive this house.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions at this time for Katie? Seeing none, let's move on to the applicant's presentation, please.
How do I close?
Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome. How do I close out? Okay, so, yeah, you have to, the red light has to be on here and there, and you have to slide up and down. You can't do the side to side.
Okay.
Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Peter Spalding. I am the developer for Bond Farm Cohousing Community. I live at 2734 Juniper in Boulder, and will be moving to Longmont on April 1st at 330 Ross Street. I just want to give 10 highlighted points regarding this project. First, I want to start off with the Bond Farm Cohousing Community vision. Our vision is to live creatively in peaceful relationships with each other, our neighbors, and our environment. We want to create an intergenerational community in a planned rural farm-like setting, respecting everyone's need for private time and space while providing common facilities for a safe and caring village. We are working towards affordable choices to reflect the social and economic diversity of our membership. An objective among the existing members, active families, and adults who prefer healthy living practices is to live independently among one another in a supportive and thoughtful manner. We all believe in developing a community that is oriented around the cultivating, or cultivation and harvesting of agricultural systems, and to develop systems that are sustainable and efficient. Concepts that fit within our idea of cohousing are the following: respecting the viewpoints of others, sustainability and healthy living practices, energy efficiency and smart growth plans, micro and macro, participate with the greater community, the Neighborhood Association, to integrate intelligence, strong, and self-governing protocols for the HOA. The greater community benefits. Not only does the internal community benefit from one another with shared resources and knowledge, so does the Greater Bond Farm Neighborhood Association and the residents within the city of Longmont. By working with the prior and existing president of the Bond Farm Neighborhood Association and neighboring families, we concluded together that the best location for the park was on the northeast corner of our site, which complements the gazebo located to the east. The decision-making process for the park location became the basis of our concept plan and the overall design. You can imagine, when we have future block parties, events, how our parking plan along Spruce will offer more opportunities for planned events like Halloween hay rides, Easter egg hunts, educational efforts, and much more. CSA, agribusiness, something that's consistent with the Bond Farm. It used to be a chicken house and then converted into a dairy farm. BFCC is an organic farm-to-table community, offering excess shares of produce and other products to its neighbors and businesses. The CSA helps to reduce the HOA dues for the residents based off of a 150 annual budget, which would be ample. Our average monthly bill would be about $270, $75 a month. With the revenue from the CSA and other services like renting a commercial-grade kitchen, we project that our dues will be reduced to $215 or lower. This helps address the affordability issue. There are educational opportunities for kids and adults, how to raise chickens and bees and to grow produce. We plan to participate with the Longmont Economic Gardening Initiative, LEGI. Over the last six years, the city of Longmont, Colorado, has strengthened its economic base by providing local businesses with a variety of resources that improve their competitiveness and stability. The history and practices of Longmont Economic Gardening Initiative provide lessons for communities seeking to grow their economies by nurturing local entrepreneurs. Bond Farm Park, .85 acres. The original design and placement was created by Bond Farm Neighborhood Association, past and current president, neighboring families, and the BFCC community. They actually had an open house for that. The park will require handicapped spaces, a pad for maintenance vehicles, and parking for the community. This is one of the reasons why we have designed the parking spaces within our property line along Spruce Avenue, so that all ages who are visiting the park from other neighborhoods don't have to walk several blocks to enjoy it. Currently, parallel parking or diagonal parking. This is another opportunity for BNFA and BFCC, Bond Farm Neighborhood Association and Bond Farm Cohousing Community, to collaborate on the park design and name. The city park will serve the neighborhood in many different and beneficial ways. We look forward to working with the community on the design. Greater access to neighborhood parks. By providing an access north-south trail along the west side of our property that accesses the trail south of the Hildebrandt property, the idea is that on the north-south, on the west side, that it'll jog and then connect to the Hildebrandt property, and the Hildebrands are willing to do an easement that will connect to First Street, that will then take them over to Sunset Bridge, and then down into Isaac Walton Park and to the St. Frank Greenway. So we are making a full connection from the gazebo to our park along the east-west on the north side of the property, and then down on the west side, north-south. This is going to create more opportunities for a walkable, bikeable neighborhood. Live-work. The enterprise zone, we've been recently established in an enterprise zone. This is the map. You can see it up here in our location, with the black spot there. The enterprise zone is intent is to encourage businesses to locate and expand in distressed geography. Since we are developing a CSA and have residents who want to create a home business or home businesses, we look forward to participating with this program as well as LEGI. Our neighborhood is full of home, or our neighborhood is full of home businesses. Our buyers want the opportunity to have home businesses as well. Our site concept plan configuration allows for homeowners the option to walk from their residence to their business or to have a live-work situation, thus further reducing the trip generation and allowing more daily social connections within the community and networking with the greater community. Having the fastest internet in the state will also help attract talent and services as great addition to our neighborhood. BFCC common spaces. Our common spaces are intended for the residents to have daily social interactions. Our community members, we have workshops, and they actually did most of the programming for the site plan. So when it comes to programming the common spaces, when it came to the site design, we held weekend-long workshops where our community members, our purchasers, worked with our architect and other trades in order to create the concept plan that you see today. So part of those common spaces are woodshop bike repair, greenhouse, farming, indoor-outdoor potlucks, commercial-grade kitchen, centralized mail. That's something that creates social interaction within the community. Flex spaces for social events, meetings, internal and external. Create associate memberships for the greater community to also participate, and much more. The traffic report. The report shows that the traffic volume would be less than the The report shows that the traffic volume would be less than the currently designated RMD zoning, a full build-out by a developer. The design of our site naturally slows down traffic because we have a one-way entry, and we are willing to work with the city of Longmont to install tabletop speed bumps for safety for families moving into the site. It's very important. We've already, I've already spoken with the first responders and have said that we would all be one loud voice for that in order to slow down traffic. So in the traffic report, it shows that there's a 2% increase, which is relatively low for this type of development. And the reason being is, in co-housing, we're able to retain people on-site. We're going to have, compared to RMD, we're going to have units that are 700 square foot, up to 3,800 square foot. So, those that are less than 1,000 square foot would probably only have one vehicle. So, we are asking for a parking reduction on that sense. So, when compared to a max build-out with the existing annexation agreement and build-out for RMD, it would be a lot more traffic if it was all single-family homes with two-car So I encourage everybody to refer to the traffic report and consider the high density that we're moving in with the PUDR, because it's a benefit to the community. Walkability, bikeability. BFC members understand the importance of walkability and bikeability when making their purchase. We believe in right-sizing our lives and encourage buyers to have only one vehicle. With all that is programmed into our site by community members and the developer, there are less reasons to leave the site. Due to the location, we have enormous amount of opportunities to walk or bike downtown for services or other local amenities. Smart urban planning. We believe co-housing is smart urban planning. The co-housing model benefits and strengthens communities through the architecture, site design, and spirituality, strong community. During the PZ Commission hearing, February 24th, 2016, the Commission heard from Aaron Fostick and Phil Greenwald, who both testified about the Longmont, the envisioned Longmont Plan, Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, LACP. Their testimony regarding vertical mixed uses was enlightening, and they acknowledged the importance to be flexible with the LACP and with the Land Development Code. Mixed use and live-work were specifically addressed in order to provide local access to services. Developing this sort of agenda is meant to enhance the city of Longmont guiding principles. We see this vision and our development as a complement to the guiding principles. We are in the enterprise zone, which encourages economic development. Lastly, being a good neighbor. All the points that we are speaking to above help to make us good neighbors due to the level of collaboration and opportunity our design offers. We too want a safe neighborhood. We too desire a multicultural and multi-generational community. We too look to work with our neighbors and to strengthen the overall community. We too feel that this diversity housing type will add a dynamic community, or will add a dynamic community to the city of Longmont housing inventory, a future model possibly to reference. And we too want to thank you for taking the time to consider what it is that we are proposing to youth and the city of Longmont this evening, co-housing. Once again, thank you on behalf of the Bon Farm Co-Housing Community members, which includes me too. I'll be moving in.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Questions for Mr. Spalding? Commissioner Bruno?
Yeah, it seems like a lot of the feedback that I was reading as part of the packet had to do with traffic, and I'm just wondering, as a co-housing community, what sort of a car-share element is going to be there? Is there anything official, or do you feel that maybe the residents will take it upon themselves to be more involved in that kind of a program?
That's been thrown around a lot. We intend to have a car-share program.
Okay.
Yeah. You see, that's a very big benefit.
The level of participation you expect for that?
I'm sure our community members here can address that, but I think it'd be a high level.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? I have some questions for you.
Sure.
Need to ask some questions about the retail that's in your concept plan that's facing onto Spruce Street. So I understand from our review criteria that this is supposed to be primarily for the use of residents of your development. So why is it facing onto Spruce Street?
Why?
Yes.
Well, it's twofold. One, with the parking, it's advantageous for the way the site is developed with the CSA component, and then the residential component, and then the street component, as well as the park, because the park's going to need handicap parking as well. So the overflow of having the mixed use along the Spruce Street there is, it's a very efficient design for us. And all the businesses that we're talking about, we're trying to, you know, are low-traffic type of businesses. So, we have a carpenter, a roofer, myself, who would all want to go in on one of those spaces so that we could create a cohabited workspace. And, you know, most of my work is going out, and so is the carpenter, but there's always the opportunity to have one or two people stop by for a meeting. We're interested in creating educational opportunities with a hub where we have a, I'm sure everybody understands what a hub is, a workspace hug, hub, where people can come and have fast internet, and you rent out those spaces and you have some sort of creative plan for that. Also gives us the opportunity to use that space. We have one buyer who's interested in doing after-school programming, tutoring, and stuff of that nature. So a lot of the things that we're bringing to the table, I think, create a more walkable, bikeable type of environment where the greater neighborhood might actually use these services, where they would walk from their home, causing even less trip generation, which is something that I think that this overall design does.
Okay. So, somebody in one of the letters in our packet asked the question, given some of the examples of the workspace uses you're talking about, that it's already allowed to run a home occupation under city code. So why not just build these as residences, and if somebody wants to run a home occupation, such as being a roofer, they could do so? Why do you have to have retail designated, rather, or live-work designated, rather than just let people follow city code that already exists?
Well, I think sometimes having that sort of separation between the resident and actually going to work, so to speak. I currently work out of my home, but I can tell you that if I could bike or walk to work and be in a separate space to work is a lot more functional for myself, and I'm much more productive that way. So I think in that sense, I think it's important, and I think a lot of our buyers feel that. And I think that with the mixed-use intent or the live-work intent, that the way Longmont is growing, especially with its infrastructure, it supports it, and I don't think that we'd have a trouble, you know, filling those spaces. And if it was a recommendation that it was to go to residences, then we'd want to maximize those residences along Spruce. They're going to be for-sale units, so.
Okay. Given that, we also saw in our packet an argument that the live-work spaces would help reduce the HOA fee. And you gave us some numbers about the reduction of the HOA fee approximately, given the CSA, which is great. By the way, don't get me wrong, totally on board with co-housing and CSA, okay?
Great.
But I have a lot of questions about the retail.
Sure.
So, what level of reduction in the HOA fee do you expect might come from somebody also buying into a live-work space? And how would that reduction of the HOA fee actually occur? I couldn't quite figure out how that was financially occurring.
A unit's a unit in my book. So, it's going to, all the HOA dues, the numbers that I project here are average square foot, and it's all determined by square footage. So those units will pay HOA dues, and they will have access, whether they're residential or live-work. We, we're not afraid to have people who are in a live-work situation share our resources. So they would be paying the same monthly dues as a resident would. And then we're also thinking about, and it's something that's typical in other co-housing developments, is the associate membership. So, if the co-housing community that we have decides to create associate memberships, then the greater community can also participate in using those spaces as well, in our common spaces.
Yeah, so that, actually, you gave me a nice segue to my next question.
Great.
Which is, say I bought a live-work space and was part of the community. Could I then sublease it, say, to a hair salon? The work part of my space?
No. I, you know, we are willing to work with the city of Longmont to write into perpetuity certain ideas, like not having a dispensary, not having a pawn shop, not having certain things of that nature, that the community, the greater community, Bon Farm Neighborhood Association, has already voiced that they don't want.
Okay.
There are definitely things like that that we would write into perpetuity into our declarations, so, in our CCR. So we're not, we're not worried about that. We think that because of the overall design with the CSA, that there are going to be niche markets, there are going to be small businesses, small pop-and-top, or mom-and-pop type shops, and that's what, you know, we're grassroots type of organization. We build from the ground up. We feel that the current production builder does it backwards. They put the cart before the horse. We're building community first. The community has a say and ownership into what it is being built, and then as a facilitator, I'm more as a facilitator than a developer. So, and I'm proud of that, because we're bringing many voices to the table rather than just one.
Okay. And the city sign code currently allows electrified signs, which can be on at night. There's concern about light pollution, et cetera. Are you open to modifying that if the commercial spaces were on the street side?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're going to have a woodshop, so we're going to have really cool signs.
And, okay, I know that was a lot of questions, but I think I got through my list. Any others? Commissioner Teta?
I just had two for you, Mr. Spalding. One, to clarify, six of the 46 units would be live-work.
Correct. 1,000 square foot units.
And the second thing, the park, you dedicate the .85 acres and then depend on the city to build it out or develop it?
Currently, in the annexation agreement amendment that we're working with the city of Longmont, or the city council with, the current proposition, or the existing annexation agreement, they had earmarked a certain amount of money for the two acres back 15 years ago. Well, the price of the property has drastically increased. So we took it upon ourselves, and with the Bon Farm Neighborhood Association, to those who attended our open house when we relocated, and I was working with Kim Sugar at the time, the Parks and Rec Department, the idea, I floated the idea that we just go ahead and donate the land, and then the city used the $240,000 that was earmarked into improvements soon after the development was complete, so that the whole neighborhood got a park right away. And we felt that that was a real big win-win situation for our community, for the Bon Farm Neighborhood Association, and for the city of Longmont.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bruno?
Yeah, I just have a quick question about the parking. It looks like there's an underground structure, and this information may be here, but how many spaces does that have approximately?
You recall how many spaces? Underground parking?
Yes.
Was it 45? Yeah, I think it was actually around 55. 45 to 55.
Okay, so probably about half of the total parking that you're planning on having. And there's the 29 across the street, and then I'm guessing maybe the low-density has their own, they have their own garages, perhaps?
Single families would, yes.
Okay.
It's a tricky site. I mean, one of the things that's really important to understand is that the site development cost for this site, because there's an elevation grade change of 30 feet from the south to the north, we have sloping issues. The way water sheets across the property, there are a lot of things to consider. Another reason why we have the CSA at the bottom of the site, so that, you know, we're sort of detaining the water, and it's being absorbed by the earth rather than going off into the stormwater sewer system. So, there's a lot that we have calculated, and it's much more expensive to design or to do the site development on this site than it would be if there was only a five-foot elevation change from north to south. So, it's a really challenging project, and that's why the affordability component for us is so important, is because you're talking probably about 1.5 million extra dollars just on the site development costs at minimum.
Sure.
Other questions at this time for Mr. Spalding? Seeing that, Mr. Spalding will probably call you up again after we get through some comments.
Sure. I'm available for you. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing item, and we invite the public to speak. I have a list here of 28 names, which we'll start to hear from all of you. Just some ground rules first, so that we can get through this in a timely manner. It'd be great if you can try not to repeat things that others have said. It just, you know, we're taking notes, and we do want to try to get done by 11 o'clock tonight if we can. And also, when you come up, please state your name and your address for the record. There will be three lights next to the podium, a red, yellow, and green. You get five minutes. When you're one minute away from your time limit, the light turns yellow, and then at red, I will stop you, and we'll move on to the next. So, let's get started with Jim Wilson, please.
Jim Wilson at 1440 Baker Street in Longmont, and I'm, my partner Theresa Foster and I are members of the Bon Farm Co-Housing Community. And I'm going to be a little bit redundant, and I don't mean to be, but my speech was planned to talk about some things that you guys have already asked questions to and got answers, and I just want to reinforce the fact that I don't like traffic, and I don't like bright lights. So I would certainly be opposed to bright lights on Spruce Street or anywhere else except what was necessary for safety. So I'm definitely in tune with that. I would do a car-share thing. I would definitely do a car-share thing. I walk pretty much everywhere or ride my bike. So that would be considerably less traffic, at least from our household. One of the things that was brought up that I've heard and seen people say is, the CSA may bring people into the neighborhood because we're going to have a farm stand or something of that nature, and we're not going to do that. Three acres of land is going to barely cover our own needs when we invest in it, so more than likely, we'll just be pulling off of that farm ourselves and not have people from outside. And another big issue is the retail piece. You know, it's called retail, but again, it's services-type things. I'm a photographer and would love to have a little studio that I could work in. There's other artists that may want to have some studio space, and we could do stuff there, not have people come in, but to actually work. You know, if you're a potter, you want to work and then bring your stuff somewhere else. So you're not going to see the extra traffic of people coming. It's not like, you know, clothing stores and all that kind of stuff. I would, as a member of the community, I would be opposed to having extensive retail myself, so. So short, sweet, and simple. I appreciate the time and hope you're not here too late.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I apologize in advance if I slaughter the pronunciation of some names.
Peter Modifari.
Well, thank you. Okay, Peter Modifari.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Peter Modifari. I reside at 221 Sherman Street. When I first heard about the whole concept, I was very leery about it, because the streets, the arterial streets that are bringing people to this neighborhood are kind of small. They're not large, 30-foot wide. Actually, my street, Sherman Street, is only 28-foot wide. Most people on our block do not have garages, so you're going to have off-street, on-street parking in those neighborhoods. Doesn't leave you a lot of width for cars to come by to and fro to Spruce Street. But then, I was at the September meeting, and I liked the concept that Peter Spalding brought, and I thought, you know, this might be the best use for this property. That being said, I do have the problem with the retail space, because anybody that's in retail and anybody that's selling anything, if you're a business, you want to be successful, so you want people there. If you're going to bring people there, we're going to have even more traffic. The traffic that we're going to have on those streets is going to be a little bit heavier than normal, and I think that we just have to deal with that. But then when you bring retail into the play, you're going to have more traffic during the day, instead of the morning traffic of people going to work. And sure, everybody, a lot of people will ride their bicycles, but everybody has a right to get into their car and drive. There's no law against that. And it's going to happen. Everybody's going to have visitors. There's no law against that. There's no law against that, and it's going to happen. And, excuse me. And my concern is that the retail is going to bring in more people on those streets that really has to be. And I'm a contractor. I've been in business. I've held a Longmont Contractors License since nineteen-eighty-one, a City of Boulder Contractors License since nineteen-seventy-nine. And when I first started the business, I did the same thing. I worked out of my home on two-twenty-one Sherman Street. I was there for four years, and I moved the business out because it grew too big. We now are in the Vista View Office Park on County Road Three and a Half and One-Nineteen. But how do we know that's not going to happen in this kind of situation? And when somebody does get busy, and they do bring more traffic, and that's what you're in business for. You want to make money, you want more customers, you want more traffic. Traffic is what businesses are always looking for, and that's my concern. Other than that, I think the concept is great. I love the CSA, and I liked, I mean, forty-six units is a lot, but I think it's the best use for that property besides the retail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Modifari. Next is Anne Harmshawn? Hamish Shawn? H-A-M? No? Okay. Next, Mary Huey Silavri? Some of the handwriting's a little hard for me to read. Sorry.
I'm here because a neighbor I live at, my name is Mary Huey Lele Evi. I live at twelve-twenty-one Third Avenue. My next-door neighbor is a part-time resident. She called after receiving the last public notice. I keep an eye on her house while they're gone, and she said, "What's this about, a development on Third Avenue that's associated with this?" So, that's what I'm here for, is to get some clarification on what type of commercial activity is going to be on Third, because we have so much traffic, it is now. That's our main concern.
We're not really using this time period for a Q and A, but, that's okay, but actually, I'm going to ask Katie Guthrie to step in and clarify the location of the commercial, because I think there was an error in a letter which went out.
Ah, so it's the Third, it's not Third, it's Spruce.
Correct. So, but could we, for the record, could we have Ms. Guthrie clarify that?
Chairman Chernick, you are correct. There was an error in the public notice that was sent out. It had two small, one typo and then one error. The typo was that it had, the project only included forty units, and indeed, it includes forty-six units. And the other error was a reference to the commercial component along Third Avenue and not Spruce Avenue, so.
Great.
I did receive about four emails just asking about that clarification, and I responded to them, so.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Lele Evi. Dan Tulenko?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dan Tulenko. I am the owner and occupier at two-zero-five Grant Street. And so, a full third of this proposed development is to be designated as community-supported agriculture. So, that's community-supported agriculture. Now, I have a feeling that if you took a poll of most everyone in this room, they would raise their hands and say that they support community-supported agriculture. So, now, the city of Longmont is also part of this community, and so, a question that I have is that from what I understand, the city is unwilling to either give back or lease any of the water rights to this community-supported agriculture. Is that correct?
That's not, right now, for us to answer. We're not in a Q and A situation, but, so if you have further comments, please add them to the record, and after we get done with public comment, then we will be asking more questions of Ms. Guthrie and Mr. Spalding as well.
All right. Very good. In that case, I'll continue my comments with the assumption that in fact, that that is true, that the city is unwilling to give back any of the water rates. So, the city is asking the residents of the area to sort of make a large concession here to have retail, a certain amount of retail, put into our neighborhood, and at the same time, then the city is unwilling to budge in trying to support the needs of this area to have some water. So, I guess my question I would have on that would be, is, you know, is that setting a good example? But I understand I'm not allowed to ask a question at this point in time. Well, gosh, I guess I have two other questions that apparently I'm not allowed to ask.
No, Mr. Tulenko, please don't misunderstand me. Please go ahead and state the questions for the record, so that we have it in the record.
Okay, very good.
But we just won't do a back and forth right now.
Okay, very good. So, under the current zoning of residential mixed density, would that allow a CSA to be located on the property? Okay, so we don't have an answer for that one either? Okay. All right, so, all right, there's that question. Then the final question that I have, and I appreciate your patience with me, is under PUDR zoning, let's say hypothetically, zoning and planning decides, yes, we're going to grant this PUDR zoning to this particular piece of property, and then subsequently, after that happens, the deal falls through, as we had earlier was brought up, that that is in fact a possibility, that could in fact happen. What is the maximum square footage under PUDR that would be allowed to be on that five-point-eight-nine acres? Okay?
Okay? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tulenko. Next on our list is Rick Epstein.
My name's Rick Epstein of twenty-eight-seventy-two Bluff Street, and I have some keys to pass out if you'd like. I'm the principal of Re-Architecture, and along with Building Collective, we're the architects for the project. And I'm also an adjunct professor of urban design at University of Colorado in Denver. And so, we're really excited to be involved in the project, and we're really excited about the diversity of uses. There was a question about the mixed-use zoning, I mean, the medium-density zoning, and really, that's kind of a, really suggests one type of unit, one type of size, and I think one thing that's so exciting about this is the diversity of housing types, which can really bring in a diverse set of people, bringing the agriculture and the park together. And the project also will include a commons house, a barn, so it's really meant to be, you know, in a sense, it's almost like a village in some senses, not just a typical housing development. And I think that's what makes it so exciting. And so, because of that, and as you heard from the first resident who spoke, there's a very diverse and unique community that will be there. And so, I'm really bringing this diversity of residents, of different ages, different family sizes. And so, the, I wanted to speak to the mixed-use component, because that's kind of a critical piece here everyone's been talking about, and I think that's really important to this mix of uses and to this concept. It's really to create that kind of flexibility, and a lot of people want to live at home, they want to work near their neighborhood, they want to do things like a photography studio, like a chiropractor studio, those types of things. So, the way the code is written, it comes out as more, quote, "retail," but it really isn't exactly, you know, a fair description of what's happening. These aren't Seven-Elevens and, you know, those kinds of uses. And it's really about creating a range of opportunities for the residents and the neighbors to create local services and to really support this kind of artisanal type of community that's there. So, it's really an essential component to really support the type of resident who's there, and it created kind of a different kind of a lifestyle in many kind of ways. As Peter mentioned, there's that on-street parking to support the park, and there's also the on-street parking, parking in the whole neighborhood, I mean, in the whole Bon Farm design community for the residents. So, one thing this use really supports is this idea of shared parking in terms of both time of day and the residents that are there. So, some residents leave, there's some residents come, and we have the park use. So, a lot of those uses happen at different times. So, concerns about parking, I think, are really addressed in that way. Architecturally, the concept is really to design these elements with a residential scale in mind. So, I think that's a really important component. So, that addresses both the size of the unit itself, as well as the character of the unit. So, again, it's not meant to have a commercial vibe, if you will. You know, it's meant to have a very residential character, and I travel a lot, too, with work and just begin, and take, you can see a lot of examples of, you know, businesses and houses and, you know, where, or like on West Pearl in Boulder, there used to be the old Pasta Jays, which was in a house, and, you know, it's not that we're going to do a Pasta Jays in a house there, but it's really more about the character, that it's got that kind of residential feel to it. And this small scale really ensures that the type of users is thousand-square-foot. I mean, that's teeny, right? So, that is a really teeny user. So, those are really the type of users that we're looking at, is to try to create this much smaller, smaller kind of use. So, providing these opportunities for uses that can potentially serve the residents, we also think that that can really contribute to the vitality of the neighborhood. The park is really a public place, so having some kind of use right against there that isn't residential right there can allow, you know, this exchange of ideas and activities to happen right there. And we really think that it can add to the really desirable qualities of the area. So, from a planning, urban design, architectural perspective, we really feel that the elements further the goals of the project of sustainability, they complement the park, and then create a unique, but we feel a very compatible aspect of the project, and can really create a kind of a nice public face to the project. One further comment, there were some questions about the...
Mr. Epstein, I do need to call your time on this, just to be fair to everybody.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Next on our list, Barbara Graves.
I live at sixteen-twenty-six Centaur Circle, Lafayette. I am a member of the Bon Farm community, and we tried to move into Longmont two years ago, but the flood happened and we couldn't. So, we're looking forward to being part of this community. We don't want to live in a commercial zone either, so I think that our community will be very careful of who moves in, and there will be some oversight on which businesses will be allowed to be in there and which will not. We have already downsized ourself to one vehicle. We had two, and we would be willing to share vehicles rather than own one. We do hope that Longmont will have more bus transportation, because right now, to get from Longmont to Boulder takes three or four hours. We, sorry, we have a son who needs to take transportation, and it does not happen that fast.
I take the bus every day. It's about fifteen minutes.
So, I would welcome a mini-transport to take our neighborhood out, and that's probably what we'll organize within it, rather than each of us driving our own cars. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Graves. John Graves.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is John Graves. I live at sixteen-twenty-six Centaur Circle in Lafayette. As my wife said, we are looking to move into Longmont. We have been interested in this project since the time we left our housing in Maine and moved to Colorado, and we're very much interested in living in a co-housing community where we would be sharing resources. One of the reasons that we're here is that we need, we are intending to build a flex or an innovative community where we are going to, you know, have agriculture on the site, we're going to have housing on the site, and we're hoping to have a certain amount of retail live-work space, which would help us to reduce some of the costs of the HOA. When, it seems that at the moment, part of the most, you know, the most controversial is that we're asking for retail space or we're asking for live-work space, and you have to look at this in terms of what we're actually proposing. We have on the table six units, which are a thousand feet each. When you look at a thousand feet, you're looking at something that would have a footprint like twenty-five feet by forty. It's not a lot of space. When the community thinks that we're going to move retail in there, I don't think they're looking at it realistically. Someone who's looking for retail is going to need much more space to handle inventory. So, we're really looking for services or to build a hub, which would provide a place for people to have an office while they're trying to get their ideas together, or to have low-impact traffic, such as a contractor who has, wants to have a place to organize his business, lay out his plans, and work. Those are not high-traffic generators. Additionally, if you're looking for retail, you want to get exposure. The streets that surround this community are, as the community members aptly point out, are not viable for high traffic. Any retail organization that tries to move in there isn't going to find the traffic flow that they need. The streets won't carry it. So, it automatically, you know, the physical features of the community are going to negate anyone who's really interested in setting up a successful retail, which needs high-traffic generation. It's our intent that we would have a very low footprint in terms of traffic generation. And as Peter has stated, we have people who are in the community who are already interested in buying that, and buying and living or working in that space. All of those particular applications are low-impact uses. So, I think that there's some, you know, we would like to allay the fears of the community that we're moving into and hoping to become a part of, that we're not bringing a monster into this community. We're bringing services and space that will be used by people, particularly mostly in our community, to do their work and then to, and would not be high-generation businesses. So, at that, I'd like to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Gene Walker.
Commissioners, my name is Gene Walker. I live at two-zero-two Francis Street, pretty much directly across from this proposed project. A couple of things that have not been brought up tonight that may have an effect on this. The idea of Spruce Street being a very narrow street is true. If there's a car parked on both sides of the street, there's only room for one-car traffic down it. It's strictly a one-way street if there are cars parked on both sides. We are about to become inundated with more traffic beyond this project due to the repair of the Sunset Street Bridge. It has been very quiet in our neighborhood since the flood, and that is because the traffic doesn't flow there. With the Sunset Street Bridge going in... With the Sunset Street Bridge going in, we are going to get that traffic back, and it's going to be more, because the bridge is now compatible with four more traffic. Not only four-wheel traffic, but two-wheel traffic because of the bike lanes moving in. So there is a concern for safety. Another area that may have an effect on it is the construction of the area by the old turkey plant. Now, if I was coming from the west side of Longmont to do shopping or visit the restaurants there, in order to avoid the delays on Third Street, the lights at Terry Kaufman and Main, and try to make a left-hand turn into that area, I think I would go down Spruce Street and make the jog to First Street so that I could get into this area straight with a light. This may add more traffic to our area. Now, as far as the proposed project here tonight, I commend the proposed residents that they would like to do car-sharing and reduce the number of vehicles. However, it is, on average, in the United States, the average household has 2.28 vehicles. The, in Longmont, there is sixty-two percent of the residences of the households have two or more vehicles. Now, I can't, I can't tell these people that they can't have their cars. I just want to know where they're going to park them when they run out of space in this project. They say they're going, can park on the street. There's businesses going in this street. If I'm a businessman, I would want my parking there, even if it is low-impact, and even if it is low-volume of customers, I would still want my parking space so that I could serve those customers, which then leaves, well, I guess they have to park on Spruce Street. Now we have a bottleneck, because Spruce is not wide enough to carry that kind of parking and traffic. I believe it was said before that if I had a business there, I would want to make the best of that business. And if that includes bringing in more people, that's what would happen. They, they are very conscientious about this, but you cannot stop everything. Okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Kara Bradley.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kara Bradley, and I currently live at twenty-seven oh seven Valmont in Boulder, and I, too, am a member of the Bone Farm co-housing community. I don't have a lot of new additional things to say that haven't been addressed by other community members, so I'll make this short. I want to live in co-housing. It's something that my husband and I have been looking forward to for a long time. We want to have a community that not only serves our group, but the greater community of the Bone Farm and Longmont. So we will do anything in our power to make whatever we have available to us open, welcoming to the greater community, and hopefully enhance the city of Longmont and our community that we live in. Okay? And thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Daya Calsa, Daya Calsa.
Hello, my name is Daya Calsa. I live at twenty-seven oh seven Valmont Avenue in Boulder. And the main point I wanted to make is that most of the people you see among us are either gray hairs or no hairs. And this is a place that we are hoping to be our final resting place. We might be able to have a little cemetery or something on the property. But it's really important for us that we live in an affordable community. And by affordable, I mean, that's, everybody has their own idea of what affordable, but if we think of the fact that Longmont does not have affordable housing, we are doing everything possible that we can make it affordable. Now, most of us are going to be in pretty small units. I mean, let's, let's say the price is $300 a square foot, which is not unreasonable for new construction. So we're talking about a thousand-square-foot unit would be $300,000. That's not cheap. In order, and then we have HOA dues on top of that. So in order to make this affordable, we are looking for different creative ways. And I think that the benefit is, of course, not only going to be for members of our community, that we will have something sustainable, but as a model for other projects like this. And, you know, things are changing, and, and I just want to address the members of the greater community. We really honor the way you've come forward and, and made comments about this, and there's a real authenticity there, and I really appreciate that. I want to let you know that we're being authentic as well. We don't want to create a hassle for anybody. We will do the best we can to make it an absolutely livable community for everybody concerned. This is a very big part of who we are. Oh, and I did want to address the issue about the width of the street. I don't know the exact, specific details of it, but we're paying to widen the street to make parking, so that Spruce Street will be a little bit safer. I don't think there's anything else I need to say right now. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration, and thank the general members, the greater Bone Farm community, for coming out and expressing their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calsa. Chuck Kurnick.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chuck Kurnick, I live at two thirty-nine Grant Street in Longmont. And of all of the possible developments that could go in at the bottom of, at the Bone Farm, the existing Bone Farm, I think this is the best one. I don't, it's, I think, a fantasy to think that no development would occur there ever. So co-housing and CSA, a great idea, I really like it. A couple of my concerns, the parking, I really don't anticipate needing thirty parking spots for a .85-acre park. I don't really see that as being a destination park, unless they're going to have a really great slide. Second of all, the traffic study, that Gene was talking a little bit about traffic earlier. That traffic study was done in 2015, and just anecdotally, the traffic has changed on Spruce Street after the floods, after the Sunset Bridge was, was, was taken out. I know that we don't use Spruce Street as much as we had before the bridge was, was taken out. Also, the point that Commissioner Poland made about the retail, we, I haven't heard a really good answer about this commercial, the commercial yet. There's still a lot of risk there, I think, on our side, as well as on the developer's side. If they don't get some, if they can't get the proper commercial tenants in there, I mean, they're going to be looking for other things. And so it just concerns me a little bit that if we saw a better plan for what that was going to be, that would allay my fears a little bit. And then, lastly, I can't remember my last point, but everyone has made my, has made my points. Oh, I remember what it was. It was, so let's say that the development does, does fall through, the zoning goes through, the development falls through, now this is PUDR, what then? Then we can, we might get something that we really don't want to see go in there. So that's probably my biggest concern about the whole development. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kurnick. David Cottington.
Commissioners, thank you for your opportunity tonight, and this opportunity to speak with you. I'm David Cottington. I live at forty-one forty Seventeenth Street in Boulder. And just to supplement what Daya Calsa said, and Peter Spalding can give you more detailed information about this, I believe we're planning to have some off-street parking as well in the community, which should provide a substantial number of parking areas for us and the community. I heard somebody say something about a roofer. Well, that's me. And it's very possible that I may be one of those people that I'm in a work-live unit. And I just want to say to the community at large, we are the face of your new neighborhood, and we have every intention of being very good neighbors. In fact, we are going to vote as a group on the types of uses that might come up for the work lives. So it's going to be a very important issue for all of us in the community. And something else I want to share with you is that, as a group, we have gone through numerous seminars to become good citizens of this so-called small city, because that, in essence, is what it is. This co-housing community is going to be a community within a community. So one of the seminars that we did on a weekend, it was a two-day seminar, was about facilitation. So we were, we were coached, we were trained on how to be better facilitators within our community. And so the, the awareness that we're developing as a community is at a level that I've never seen before. And so it's preparing us to be really aware and sensitive to our neighbors within the community that we're developing and the community at large. And I just want to emphasize how important it is for me, and I believe everybody else in the Bone Farm community, that we are good neighbors and that we really do want to work with the people in the community at large to make this something that works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cottington. Vadim Koprovas.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Vadim Koprovas. I reside at four one four oh Seventeenth Street, Boulder, Colorado. And I'm not involved directly with Bone Farm, but I have several people that I know for many years that are going to be part of the Bone Farm, and I just want to attest to their character. They're some of the kindest and generous people I've ever known and worked with. And so I think they're going to be a great benefit for Longmont. And just in short, just want to say that I really believe in co-housing, and I support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Annie Srotnyak.
Good evening, good evening, Chairman Shernick and Planning Commissioners. Annie Srotnyak, two two seven Grant Street, Longmont, Colorado. Former co-housing resident in Lyons, Colorado, for seven years. So I, for one, am a huge supporter of the co-housing concept, as I've lived in it for seven years, and I think it's a wonderful model. The concerns I want to bring tonight are, have been voiced by many folks, but just to summarize quickly, just questioning the validity of the traffic study, as it was dated May fifth nineteen, or two thousand and fifteen, so the bridge was out. And so I really don't think that's valid, because it doesn't measure what it should measure, normal, you know, expected use. So we should question those numbers. Also want to just question the parking numbers. I think people in co-housing, like everyone else, use more cars than we hope. In other words, you have a duplex, you have two people living there, they each have a car, they get a roommate, that's three cars. I think we have great intentions, but I do think people use more cars than we think. One thought I had, because I've gone back and forth on this, and again, I, I am so glad that co-housing is coming to Longmont, and it's the best use of the space, in my opinion. But if, I'm wondering if, instead of having the live-work units borne by the community at large, the Bone community, is it possible to have the common house such that there are more flex rooms that would be available for members of the community to then rent or sublease or pay? Like, where I lived in Lyons, if you wanted to do an event that generated cash, you paid the HOA. So there, there might be some cash flow possibilities there, rather than having specific retail businesses. Because I hear the, the need for home businesses. I've had a bike fitting practice and done private physical therapy to have my home in the past. I get that. But is it something that we can justify the increased view? I'm being very unarticulate here. Anyhow, that's my question. And then, if the D-transfer doesn't happen, I couldn't find the density in the code for PUDR, what the maximum is, but I think that's something that we should all know before a decision is made. If the D-Transfer doesn't happen, what's the worst possible scenario? So those are my concerns with the development. Other than that, I really do welcome Bone Farm co-housing and honor and respect the integrity of the people that are going to move to the community. And, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Srotnyak. We're on page two. Clark Fishback.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. I guess most of my things have already been spoken to, but I do have about four left. One of the things that popped up in my mind is...
Mr. Fishback, can, could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Clark Fishback. I live at two two four Grant Street. I've been there about twenty-two years. Speed bumps, okay? Having lived, you know, very close to Spruce, like half a block, for twenty-two years, I can tell you without a doubt that people travel on this street forty, fifty miles an hour frequently. I think if we're going to put, you know, forty more units or forty-six more units in down on Spruce Street, we really need to have a mitigation plan for speed bumps along Spruce, as well as along Grant and Sherman, because those streets are going to turn into micro arteries. Number two, studios. Chiropractors don't work in studios, I just want to point that out. They work in professional offices, so, it just came up when somebody was speaking earlier. Thousand-square-foot for these little businesses. I've got a little home business. I've got two hundred and fifty-six square feet. Used to have about half that, and it feels like a really spacious place. Thousand-square-feet reminds me, if you've been in Longmont for a long time, the little English store that used to do, a nice business on Main Street was about that. El Doros on the Pearl Street Mall is about the same size. Third, wider streets. It is true that the co-housing is going to widen Spruce, but only in one block. And actually, the traffic really starts down on Sunset and travels all the way up to Bowen, actually. So wanted to point those few things out. The rest of this stuff has already been mentioned, so I'll give my time to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fishback. Gary Richardson.
Gentlemen, ladies, I'm Dr. Gary Richardson, twelve fourteen Spruce. I'm here because I've been here for about twenty-eight years. And the first thing I'd like to do, if, if you would mind, I'd like to ask, have the peoples who are here from the Spruce Street contingent to put their hands up. Would you mind? Just put your hands up. If you're from, if you're here from Spruce Street, okay. Yeah, and, well, yeah, regardless. Yeah, yeah, in that, in that area. Okay. All right. And the people that are here, supportive of the Bone Farm, who are you? Okay, so about, about... One of the things, I guess, one of the things I'd like to focus on is the fact that the biggest issue I see is that we've moved from what Spruce was and what it was in, in the, in the land-use comprehensive plan, it's supposed to be a low or medium-density residence, that whole area. And I understand we make some changes, and when we started, our house is on the north, and we are R1. Right across the street from us, on the south side, is Spruce. That's RMD, okay? Way back when the whole thing with the Bone Farm started, and that we had the first notification that there was people involved with changing the Bone Farm... that there was people involved with changing the Bon Farm, of course, all the people on Spruce, we were going for, you know, like, R2, you know, medium, anything we could to keep it as low as possible, because that's where we live. Well, obviously, it didn't happen. And the deal was, when it was brought into Longmont, it became an RMD, just like everybody on the south side. Okay, we can handle that. But then, all of a sudden, the new developer has said, "We're going to go ahead and go up to the PUDR." That has significant, you know, problems for all of us, and they've been talked about quite well. I guess the thing I would really ask you to think about is, the people that are on Spruce, we will be seeing that every day. The place that you're talking about, the Bon Farm co-housing, where that is, they'll never see what's on Spruce. They won't see the people in those retail places. If you...I don't know if you've been by on Spruce, but you might want to go by the Bon Farm and take a look out, and imagine going in and then cutting straight down, and it's going to go down. This summer, when we have the Olympics, think of a 10-meter tower, that's 33 feet. Peter just mentioned it's going to be 30 feet, the cut. That's how far down they are. They're not going to be looking at anything on Spruce. That's what we get. And nobody wants to talk about that, really. And all the other stuff, it's good, but the basic thing is, this is a residential area. This is the camel's nose under the tent that starts. And I'd ask you, please, please, remember that when you do your thinking about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Chris Conklin. Do we have Chris Conklin here? Okay, not seeing Chris Conklin. Leland Keller.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thanks for your time. My name is Leland Keller. I own my home at 1509 Donovan Place, and I've lived there about 14 years. And I'm one of the co-presidents of the Bon Farm Neighborhood, and have been for several years. I want to come out and say that I support the co-housing development plan, the CSA, and the vision that the co-housing development is bringing to bear here. And I welcome the inclusion of these folks into our community. The concerns that I had prepared for tonight are mostly spoken to by the people who've spoken before me, but I wanted to articulate a few things that I think bear a little bit more detail here. The traffic study that's been mentioned, if it was really done post-flood, it's missing about a third to a half of the traffic that flowed on Spruce when Sunset Bridge was in place. Just in my time living there and noticing what's happened with Sunset Bridge being out, I think that the traffic on Spruce fell by at least a third. And so if you look at that 2015 traffic study as a baseline, I think we have to question the validity of the baseline. If the baseline traffic is actually much higher once the Sunset Bridge is completed, then you get a better picture of what our real traffic flow is in the neighborhood after that bridge is completed. You have to look at that again, and that would also indicate that the increase in traffic that's indicated by that traffic study, the increase due to the development of the co-housing community would be a smaller percentage of the baseline than a true baseline with Sunset Bridge being completed. I'm concerned about the speed and the volume of traffic that we currently have on Spruce Avenue. The high-speed issue is a real concern. The volume of traffic is a concern, and that'll be exacerbated when Sunset Bridge reopens. These are issues primarily because we do feel like the walkability and the bikeability of our community is really important. People walk and bike on Spruce Avenue, and so when you have traffic going 40 to 50 miles an hour, that's a big safety issue. The children and families that would be drawn to this park would be put in danger by traffic if it continues to flow that way. It has traditionally. And so I think the city has to take a solid look at how to mitigate the real safety risks that exist now and would be exacerbated in the future by the completion of a wider bridge. And the...if you take a look in your packet, there's a curve on Spruce Avenue. Spruce curves to the south as it goes from west to east, and you lose visibility. If you're going eastbound, you lose visibility around the area of the gazebo and where the park would be. So this is a concern for people backing out who are in diagonal parking spots. And the...I'll leave it at that, just to touch on another point. I applaud the intent of the live-work in this plan that the co-housing community's putting forward, but I'm not interested in developing a shopping district, and I wanted to see you take a look at what can be done to mitigate any concerns around that. We also want to preserve the agricultural feel and the views that the community has appreciated from this farm over the many years. Thanks very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Don Russell.
Members of the Commission, my name is Don Russell. For the last 35 years, I've lived at 207 Judson, which is about a block and a smidgen away from the Bone Farm project. I am a cyclist, ladies and gentlemen, and by a cyclist, I mean I ride some, subways between 5,000 and 10,000 miles a year. And the real elephant in the room hasn't been spoken to, in my opinion. I haven't seen the traffic do anything but increase, even since the bridge was closed, due to the native roots marijuana sales down on the other side, across the street from the city's community center there. It has increased substantially. To quantify it more personally, I've almost been killed riding my bike on Spruce Avenue, because I can't cross anymore on the bridge. I usually go down to Bowen and then come up Boston Avenue. I've almost been killed three times in the last year and a half. Once again, I've ridden that route for the last 35 years, so I'm very concerned about the traffic as it is now, not even with the addition of this development. The traffic increase with that retail operation across the street from the city's community center has been absolutely amazing, in my opinion, and I'm sure that others that live in the neighborhood could testify to that. I'd personally really like to see the density of the project decreased from 46 units, eight units per acre. I believe, I believe eight units per acre is what we're looking at now. It seems to me, and looking, and I would admit to my ignorance in having not extensively studied the preliminary plans, but it seems like it's a bit more dense than the original proposals that were afoot. Bone Farm has been afoot for years, a long time since I've been in the neighborhood. By my rough mathematical calculations, probably wrong, I got something like there'll be 110 onsite parking places. I may be wrong in that, but really would like to see the density decreased, and the traffic on Spruce right now is a severe problem if you're a pedestrian or a cyclist. Thank you, members of the Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. Richard Stewart.
Good evening, folks. Good to see you again. My name is Richard Stewart. I live at 1521 Donovan Place, as is Leland. I'm a former co-past president of the Bon Farm Neighborhood. I've lived down there nearly 30 years. It's something you probably remember me talking to a few weeks ago when you had the other meeting over at the other building. Basically, I'm still in favor of it. I think I mentioned in the other meeting that it sure would have been nice if we could have totally preserved that property as a total park and so forth, but as you probably all know, it unfortunately does not have enough history to it to put it on the state or federal registry, even though it does have some history of having clay taken out of the back part of the property years ago in the early days of Longmont, when they had a downtown fire, and their buildings were rebuilt with that clay. I'm not terribly concerned, as some of the others, about the traffic on Spruce. I do that quite a lot with going over to my street down between Judson and Vivian. To me, I didn't seem like it's growing a lot. I mostly kind of just kid around, because you see a lot of the city's park and forestry vehicles have nothing to do with that since the flood and the bridge is out. But I don't know that we have particularly any choices. As Leland is, I do have some concerns about the retail and, you know, so much of the parking and the traffic along there. But so far, I think Peter Spelling has been very, very open-minded about this and listening to everybody about it, and is willing to really continue to listen, and his buildings will be low enough, starting if it does go through up on Spruce Avenue, so people have their view still, as I do at my property, which is a number of years ago, a company out of Boulder wanted to put in 20 units of two-plugs, a tri-plug, and four-plugs, and my wife and I would have lost our view to Isaac Wall Park and all the way down to Colorado Springs to Pike's Peak. So I think it's kind of coming along and working out, and I'm very much in the gardening and so forth. They do help take care of the gathering area next door that Leland was talking about that we got from a grant a number of years ago, and my background is in horticulture. So I'm very much in that open space and have no concern about losing the house there, but it'd be nice to take down and repair and have the barn still on the property, especially when it's all on our signs in the perimeter and the inside signs of our neighborhood that was also grants from the city years ago. So that's the way I feel about it. Thank you for your time. It's good seeing you again.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Ruth Thompson.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ruth Thompson. I live at 4128 Prairie Fire Circle here in Longmont. I have two children and an elderly mother and a husband, and we're all hoping to move into co-housing. I lived in co-housing for 10 years at Nylund, and I'm a huge fan of co-housing. I think it's a really special way to live. But more than that, I think it attracts a special type of person. So I've listened tonight to a lot of the concerns, and what I want to emphasize is that things like traffic problems and lit signs and people having roommates who are parking on the street, these would be of great concern to the people in co-housing. This would be our concern. We are people who are spending years trying to plan our perfect community, working with each other, to think about how we want our community to be, and to work with the greater community, and to come up with all the different problems we might have and what we can put in place to mitigate those before we even move in. We don't want lit signs. We want to grow our own vegetables. That's the kind of people we are. And so I'm trying to emphasize to you that we would be great neighbors, and we would do what we could to mitigate the problems that have occurred in the neighborhood, either due to us or not due to us, just other sorts of problems. We would be really good neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mary Morphew.
I'll pass, because I think my concerns are more...
Okay, Ms. Morphew will pass. Ken Armfield.
My name is Ken Armfield. I live at 904 Alta Street. I first moved to Longmont about 22 years ago, and something I really want to make sure the neighborhood understands here is that we're not looking at the Bon Farm community co-housing project versus leaving it the way it is. We're looking at Bon Farm community co-housing, or what will go in if this doesn't develop. We all know it's a very hot real estate market. Development is very hot right now everywhere. So the densities and the traffic, from what I understand from the traffic report, with this co-housing community, even if they're higher, and they will be higher than what's there now, no doubt about it, but comparing the co-housing, the co-housing with the agricultural component in it, what we need to do is compare the co-housing with the agricultural component versus what would be going in there if this doesn't get developed, whether it's tract homes, duplexes, fourplexes, whatever the zoning and density is going to allow, that's the traffic we'll be seeing. In addition, so that's for traffic. We need to look at, you know, whether there's a flood or not, the traffic counts are based on the developments that is there and how much, what the community is going to develop, is going to generate. I'm guessing that the co-housing will develop less than the whatever else goes in. The people on this co-housing, they're not in it for the profit. Any other developer that comes in, they're going to be there for the profit. Any other development that comes in, they may not be willing to donate land to the city, and I understand there are negotiations right now about whether parkland would be required or not. I understand the city has, at this time, perhaps there isn't the money to buy the land. This development is offering to donate it. This development also has a voluntary height restriction, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, on Spruce Street, are you still proposing to keep the height down? So for the people on Spruce Street, this developer has voluntarily constrained himself to keep the units, I think, only one story tall. Any other developer that comes in, they may be two stories tall. They might have two-story houses right there on Spruce Street, rather than a one-story building. In addition, we, with the layout with Bon Farm, you have park frontage on Spruce Street. Any other developer may not be willing to donate a park, and so there'll be houses there, possibly two-story houses, where there will now be a park frontage. So that'll further limit views. Before disclosure, I am also the civil engineer on this project, and so I have some insight on it. On the other hand, I've been a resident of Longmont for 22 years, and I think this would be a very unique and beneficial addition to the city, bring in culturally, cultural, creative people, the Google people. It's going to be a gem for Longmont, I do believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armfield. Sharon Smith Isler.
My name is Sharon Smith Isler, and I live at 330 Bra Street. I've been a resident of Old Town for over 40 years. I've worked here for over 40 years. And to give you a little context about the Bon Farm co-housing community, I am a member of that, and I have been an advocate of co-housing for over 20 years. And I've been following co-housing for over 20 years, actually, more like 35 years. And it tried to come into prospect, and it didn't have any traction. And it tried to come to Bon Farm about 10 years ago. Again, there was no traction. There's traction right now. I'm so excited about the project, and I can't echo enough enthusiasm and sentiment for this project. It's going to add a lot to Longmont. And as far as the live-work component, I think it would add a lot of good balance to this community. With the meetings that I've attended, when that idea came up that there could be a live-work component, the community loved it. And so that's why this is a part of the plan right now. And in terms of some of these issues of traffic, I'm... And in terms of some of these issues of traffic, I was not aware of how serious this traffic problem on Spruce Street is or could be, and I can assure you that is something that we will take very seriously into our plan. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith Isler. Gary Hammacher.
Commissioners, my name is Gary Hammacher. I live at 1210 Third Avenue. That is between Bowen and Sherman. And obviously, we have the theme tonight of traffic, and that is a big concern to us as well. The, as many of you might know, hopefully, the traffic on Third Avenue is terrible, and it is getting worse all the time. We count on the traffic lights at Terry and Kaufman to create enough of a break for us to get out of our driveways sometimes, hoping that there isn't traffic coming in from the side streets that would prevent us from coming out of our driveways. This project, Spruce ends at Bowen. People will be coming up Bowen to Third, and that will present additional traffic in that area and on Third. Bowen, Spruce ends at, of course, at Sunset. That puts people up onto Third. Anybody wanting to go north or anybody coming from the north, and even people that may want to go east, are going to choose to go up to Third because of its straight shot to Hoover and out to Highway 119. So while we are supportive of the development itself, in that we do believe that the agricultural component and such is nice, our concern, like everyone else, is the retail. We come from California originally, where there were two developments that I know that were live-work, and over time, the people that lived there did not work there, and the people that worked there did not live there. While it started out one way, it ended up over time being different. And the people that are here, that are buying into this community, seem to be great people who are very concerned, but over time, those things change and circumstances change and need for revenue changes, and those can impact how retail is used and the decisions that are made for that community impact all of us. So I ask that you think hard about how we might be able to limit the retail component in such a way that it does not add additional traffic, in our case, to Third Avenue, but also to the area in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammacher. Ashley Dancer.
Ashley Dancer actually needed to go. She's a graduate student. She's getting a double major in business and environmental science, so she's perfect to speak. One thing that really hasn't been, oh, my name is Danielle. I'm a Ua. I live at 5700 South University Boulevard in Denver. One thing that hasn't yet really been addressed is the youth and the younger generations and how they feel about this. And one thing that she really wanted me to speak about was that in her studies, young people want to be able to bike places. They want their services in their community. They don't want to have to get in their car and travel long distances. And she really believes, being a young graduate student, that that is really the way of the future, and in order to have more sustainable living, we need to have more services closer by. It's not really practical in the long term and longer generations to live 10 miles from grocery stores, 10 miles from a roof or consultation, 10 miles from all these other places. And the point that I would want to make as a young entrepreneur is that I'm a career coach and a massage therapist, and I've worked out of my home doing massage therapy in about a 400-square-foot studio. And I actually found it to be quite dangerous to bring strangers into my home that I was giving bodywork to. And so having a degree of separation, there was some talk about making the community house bigger and having our workspace there, and that wouldn't work for me and my business. I also wouldn't necessarily want my clients to be so intimately connected to my community kitchen or my potlucks. I have a great respect for my clients, but that would be a little bit too intimate for me. And so I am part of the Bond Farm community. I am a younger voice, and I really think that sustainable living-work options, accessible parks, accessible trails, is really something that we need in all communities. And the current developer is so willing to work to make that happen, and I'm not certain that most developers would. Also, something that, if you're not familiar with cohousing, is that in order to even be a part of this community, you're taking workshops. You're actually learning how to be a good collaborative neighbor. I'm not sure if the greater community knows it, but they actually make decisions by consensus. So whatever work situations are in those very small six units would have to be the consensus of those 46 buyers. That's really difficult to do if there's one, you know, person that really wants those neon lights and lots of traffic. I mean, I'm pretty sure most people wouldn't. And so it'd be hard to pass even within the community to do something that would create a lot of traffic or create a lot of noise. So that's something that should be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Scott Stewart.
Good evening, council members, or council member and commissioners. My name is Scott Stewart. 229 Grant Street. I've been a resident there for about 16-plus years. Some great neighbors. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. Really looking forward to this project coming through. I think Peter is very thoughtful and probably the right man to be developing this property if it gets developed, and let's face it, it's going to get developed. I do miss seeing Mr. Bond sitting on his front porch, but that was many years ago. I'm going to jump through a couple of things that I've got written down here, so forgive me if it seems a little bit out there. I'm very excited about the prospect of having such concerned homeowners being in the new Bond Farms neighborhood. The idea of retail lowering, and Peter, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, the idea of retail lowering the fees is kind of false, is a false presence, and Peter said it himself. If retail doesn't go in, the square footage is going to be square footage, so it's going to end up being more homes. So the premise that it's going to drop at $50 a month or what have you is kind of a false premise because you're basically just trading retail space for homeowner space. Your fees are going to be that lower rate or whatever that calculation is because the square footage doesn't change unless he's got a different rate for retail. Underground parking, that was spoken about a little bit earlier. The underground parking is, when I hear underground parking, I think of a large parking garage or what have you. What I believe this is, and correct me if I'm wrong again, this is, it's covered parking, and it's assigned covered parking for particular homes. It's not additional parking spaces within the confines of the community. The idea of one car per house, no matter how small that dwelling is, is kind of a false idea. I understand that the first round of homeowners here that are interested in doing it are great. We saw one family here with two kids. These kids are going to be 16. It, you know, that third car comes in, that second car comes in, what have you. I understand that every house has one, one car allotted. The original design or the designs I've seen had parking garages for cars. Let's face it, we don't all put our cars in our garages. Sometimes they sit in the driveway. There's not, they're not allocating space within the driveway for that car because when people store stuff in their garage, there are actually shared driveways if you look at the drawings, that nobody's allowed to park in the driveway, basically. You have to park in your garage. So the onsite parking issue of will they be able to handle their own within their own, within the allocated space, because that overflow comes into our neighborhood, whether it be up on Spruce and the diagonal parking, which I think is a great use of space if they're going to widen it or whatever, the issues of safety or what have you, that's a different thing. I come to you, my experience is, I work at a condo complex in Boulder where this is not much different than, you know, they don't have community-supported agriculture, although I'm trying to start it in the flower beds. They assign parking spaces in a parking garage. They have limited amount of parking within the dwelling, and everybody, even a 600-square-foot loft, has one parking space. The reality is, is two people live there. And what happens is, one parking space is there, they either have to rent another space if there's one available in the parking space, or they have to go off-site, which means one block away, two blocks away, three blocks away. This is a rather large complex, so it affects not only the immediate surrounding, but everywhere, everywhere else. I'm hesitant about mainly the parking. Peter, good luck with your project. I truly believe that you're the best guy to be handling any kind of development in this. And the retail entity, I got to say no. Don't change the zoning on this. It truly affects. You can work out of your house now. You know, I agree with the common area, the common home, and using that as a common gathering place and using that for, instead of that retail space. It just, don't change what is our neighborhood into something that it's really not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there anybody in the audience who did not get a chance to speak who would like to do so? Please come down, state your name, address, and let us hear your comments.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Casey Mazurkiewicz, M-A-Z-U-R-K-I-E-W-I-C-Z, for the record. I'm at 202 Grant Street, and so my house is actually kitty-corner to the Bond Farm, and I've been at that property for 20 years. So Mr. Bond actually lived there when I moved in, and he had longhorn cattle in his grazing pasture. It was wonderful. Those are, those days are gone. I'm in reality and understand that we are going to be developing this property, and I'm actually really excited for your development to happen in our area because I do believe that it's going to get developed one way or the other, and it's going to be done, I think, with a great deal of thought and care with Peter Spalding and the group of people that are planning to buy there, so I'm excited about that. The one thing, though, that bugs me, and I just want it to be on the record, is that the two-acre park now is down to a .85 acre park, and so I'm in sales. I would like to negotiate for a one-acre park if we could. And I live right across the street from the Pocket gazebo area, and a lot of us contribute to keeping that really wonderful, but I literally drag a hose over there all summer long and water it so that everything doesn't die. And I'm curious to know who's going to take care of the watering issues at this, hopefully, one-acre park and to keep it beautiful instead of the weed patch that our little area used to be. It was like a three-foot weed patch before we turned it into a beautiful gazebo. So I'm concerned about how that's going to be taken care of. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I thought I saw another hand up. Yes, sir. Please come on down.
Thank you. I'm David Palmer. I live at 1430 Spruce Avenue. I'm a fourth-generation native from Longmont and was born and raised on Vivian Street, which is about two blocks away. Vivian is Spruce. I just have a couple of comments because most things have been covered, but for those of us that do live in the neighborhood, I have a question to be put on the record is, are we being careful about what zoning means, when it can be arbitrarily changed and when development comes in? I applaud the people that are supporting this, that want to move in, and yet I have the same concerns. There's many, many children, and traffic is horrible. I got a brief look at the book, and even the traffic study said 640 trips per day increase. That's going to be horrendous, so I hope that you carefully consider that. And lastly, I agree that the commercial, everybody can have the best intentions, but if it's zoned that way, it can be changed depending on who's going to be in there. Just like the best intentions of the buyers and the people that want to live there, that doesn't mean if it's property and you sell it, you sell it. So I ask you to really carefully consider this. Old Town Longmont, Spruce used to be Jefferson Avenue, and it's been a single-family neighborhood forever, and it's going to forever change now. Like the last speaker, I can't stop progress, and I don't want to, and I don't want to be selfish, but we need to carefully, carefully look at this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Was there anybody that I missed who has not already spoken? Okay, seeing no hands, we will close the public hearing section of this. Okay, I am hearing a call for a five-minute biology break. We will reconvene at 9:15. We will reconvene at 9:15. Okay, we will get started again with our meeting about the Bond Farm rezoning and concept plan amendment. So if everybody can take their seats, I would appreciate that. And we will get back to our meeting. So... Yes. Yeah, there's a muffle. I will just keep talking until everybody takes a seat, and, and we will continue with our meeting. So, um, Development Services Manager Joni Marsh... Sorry. Sorry, I've been talking a little too much. Development Services Manager Joni Marsh is going to kick off our second portion here with some clarifications for us.
Chairman Shernick and members of the commission, Katie and I conferred as we listened to the speakers to go through our notes and make sure that maybe we started off by kind of going through some of the questions we heard for everyone's benefit. The folks in the audience, as well as the commission. So one of the first items that I heard was that, the question regarding if, um, there's a current owner and a current applicant. And should that plant, concept plan change, or the sale fall through or something change? Please note that this is a concept plan amendment. It will be attached to the annexation agreement. Should it change at a later date, we will be here again doing the same thing for the new concept plan. So really, there is, um, that will need to be amended if this process did not go through as you make a recommendation this evening to council. So, um, those changes, any changes would basically equate to a new concept plan process and review. There's a question about the density on the project and how density is established. So when you're rezoning to a PUD, you actually use the underlying comprehensive plan land use density, which this is medium density on this parcel. So it is six to 12 units per acre would be the underlying density range. The applicant's concept plan shows eight units per acre. The current RMD zoning allows eight units per acre. So just to revisit on that. The third item that I think there were lots of questions and conversation around were the live-work-retail component of this project. And some conversation about restricting that, changing it, how do you know what that would be in perpetuity? So I think it's important for everyone to, to remember, there is another step to this process. Should this go to council and be approved, and it's now a PUD, it would come back through our preliminary development plan process. And as commission is familiar, when you see preliminary development plans, you often see a use list. I believe you saw one maybe the last meeting. Pretty extensive. They can be extensive, or they can be small. So that really is the opportunity and a place in which you can establish what uses may be allowed as part of that commercial piece or live-work. And there are also some very specific limitations in the PUDR zoning and the zoning code that we would bring forward at that time to fit into that. So that would be a, a way by which you would be able to assure, um, adjacent property owners and, and residents that there are some limitations, in addition to Mr. Spalding's comments regarding putting that in their CCRs, which they obviously can do, and that typically happens at the time they record their final plot and get their documents in place. So those, there are certainly two options. One is within your control, one is not. And a couple other things, just want to make sure that you are also aware. So this evening, we do have a member from our natural resources staff, Steve Ranswiler, who has been dealing with the park conversations. Steve is here to answer questions, provide any overview if you so desire. And also Tyler Stamey is here, traffic engineering, to answer any questions you may have regarding traffic. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Johnny. In terms of some efficiency, how about if we go ahead and just get a short presentation from Steve Ranswiler about the park? Similar to Joni's presentation just now. And then we'll also call up Tyler and then cover traffic. So could we start with Mr. Ranswiler?
Uh, thank you, commissioners. Steve Ranswiler, Senior Project Manager for Natural Resources. I have been with the city long enough to remember the first time we dealt with Bond Farm and, and worked on the first record refusal for the property. City staff has met. We feel as though that we can provide the same recreational benefit on a .85 acre park that we could on a two-acre park. We are supportive of that reduction in size. We've been working with the applicant to figure out a way to, um, make the development work as proposed. We, as, as Katie mentioned, we went to city council back in February. And council directed us to amend the annexation agreement, bring back an annexation agreement amendment for their consideration, anyway. That would remove the first record refusal. Right now, the way the annexation, um, agreement is written is the property owner, you mentioned, I believe, the property owner can't sell the property to the development right now because of that first record refusal. So that's why we need to, um, either exercise the first record refusal, or as is being proposed, amend the annexation agreement to remove that requirement, so the property can be sold. And that's what we're working to do. We, the annexation agreement amendment would include a reduction in land size. It would also take the money set aside by city council back in 2005, the $240,000 that was going to be used for purchase of the land, and put that toward, toward design and development of the property. We also, the council communication, or the council question was where the developer hoped that we would go ahead and commit to building that park, along with the development of this property. And council was not comfortable with that. Council wanted this, this park put into the capital improvement program with all the other parks and other projects that are, have yet to be built around the city. So that was the council's direction. So we would come back with a non-specific timeframe for development of this park site. So that's, that's the general, general sense of what the annexation agreement amendment will include. This park will be a public park. We'll go through a citywide public process. It's not just for the Bond Farm neighborhood. I think residents are, from what I heard, are pretty aware of that. It will be owned and maintained by the city. So it will be irrigated by city water, and, you know, just as a typical park. What the park will look like and include, we have no idea, because we'll go through that process when we go about starting to design the park. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
We'll ask questions later. Let's, let's go ahead and get a short presentation from Tyler Stamey. Thank you very much. About traffic, validity of traffic studies, whatever else you want to throw in there for us.
Commissioner Shernick, Tyler Stamey, Longmont Public Works. As with all developments that come to Longmont, they're required to do traffic studies if they generate 500 or more daily trips. The estimate in this study was about 584 daily trips that this would generate. So over the 500, but relatively low trip generator for what we look at on traffic studies. Followed our standard criteria for assigning the trips, the new trips to the roadway network, analyzing capacity at the adjacent intersections. Capacity at the intersections they looked at was level service A with volume to capacity ratios of .01. So about 1% of capacity is what the study analyzed during the peak hours. And that's with the addition of the site traffic. I believe the long-term 2035 estimates was looking at like .3 on volume to capacity ratio. So we still had adequate capacity, good levels of service with the addition of the traffic from the proposed development. As far as date of the study, yes, the applicant came in after the bridge was out. We couldn't count, uh, Spruce and any of the other intersections pre, pre-flood. Just because of when this came in in 2015. It's something we can count afterwards, but absolutely, traffic patterns will change with and without the Sunset Bridge.
Great, thank you very much, Tyler. Question from Commissioner Flag.
Tyler, this one is in regards to the intersection at Sherman and Spruce Avenue. And you have diagonal parking that's going to back into that area. Is there, is it sufficiently safe?
Commissioner Flag, that is one thing that we've, I mean, we're not at site plan level yet on this. And that's something that, taking a look at this, that we've looked at and, um, staff internally, we've noted that as maybe an issue. It's not, uh, or not something that we're commenting on at this point, being a rezoning.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. I'm sure we'll call you back if we have more questions. Any other questions from the commission? Or discussion? Thoughts and ideas? Commissioner Flag?
I know that we discussed a little bit about the live-work. My understanding of live-work is that the person lives in the unit, and then their work is done out of that unit. And I'm assuming that's, that's what it would be here. So that whoever buys that unit is going to have a live-work situation. And should they decide not to do their work any longer, they could still stay in that unit, they don't have to move. It's their unit, correct?
So is this a question for the applicant?
I think it's a question for the planner.
Okay.
Chairman Shernick and Commissioner Flag. I, at this level of review for rezoning and concept plan amendment, the details of that have not been submitted to staff. So I'd like to, with your permission, punt this question to the applicant. Because I think that he probably is better prepared to answer the details of what live-work might look like.
We would certainly like to have the opportunity or the option for mixed use. But yeah, that's also one of the intent is that you would live in the unit and work. Like I said, there are several of us. My business, carpenter, a roofer, we would all like to go in and purchase one of those spaces, but still have our family unit, so that we would walk through our site and have an office there. So that's something that we do look forward to.
Can you hit your button? Thank you. Commissioner Palmer?
So, I guess my follow-up question to that is, you said you would prefer, or that's what you're looking at. How do you regulate that, though, in the, in that, in that kind of community? Where somebody just doesn't come in and make that just a business, instead of a live-work? And, and they just make it a work?
So for instance, if I were to live onsite, if I were to purchase one of the 40 residential units, I would then partner with other unit, other buyers within the development. And we'd go in and purchase that unit and create a business. So there is the issue of, okay, well, maybe someone goes out of business, do we find someone else to take that space? So on that, for us, having that ability to write that into the CER, or CCRs, or into the declaration is something that we look forward to working with the greater community and within our own community.
So to clarify, even though it's live-work, potentially, three or four people could get together and make it basically just an office for the four of them with no living component?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Mr. Spalding. Hi there. Do you have to be a member of the Bond Farm to qualify for one of those live-work spaces? Meaning, you know, you just talked about four people getting together to share a, a workspace. Do you have to be part of the team?
No, you don't. That's one of the things that we're trying to provide opportunity.
Okay. Okay.
For other services to come in, excuse me.
Thank you for that clarification. There were two other things that I think could use a little clarity. One is, there was a question that was brought up about the underground parking versus covered parking. Would you take a moment just to clarify what that is? And what that really is?
Sure, actually, we've calculated a parking count. So let me just bring that up on my phone here. So we have roughly 55 to 58 underground parking spaces, which would be under the main building. Then onsite, not on Spruce, but onsite, we'd have 14 additional spaces. And then another 29 spaces. And then the single families, there's only four of them. There are two car garages, that's eight. So we're roughly at, let's see, 80, 94, over 105 spaces total.
So is that over, I'm sorry, is that over 105 total spaces that are not impacting parking along Spruce or the neighboring roads?
Well, 29 of those spaces would be along Spruce.
29 of those, got it, thank you.
That's what we currently have designed.
So there was, if anyone who raised a concern about the underground parking, which is under the building parking, that is, that is in fact off the street and designated parking and part of the tally?
Correct.
Okay. There was also the comment about widening of the street. I wonder if you could just take a moment to just clarify again, what is that component of the proposal, widening the street?
Thank you for that question. Currently, parallel parking, I believe, is seven feet. And then the street itself is 16 feet. And then parallel parking, another seven feet. So the road itself was not designed to code. So what we're proposing is seven feet. And after meeting with the first responders, they want to see that to 20 feet. And then we go the 14 feet for the diagonal parking. So there's actually a jog that goes into our site. And then we have our diagonal parking.
And which, and what street is that impacted by?
Spruce.
Spruce.
Yep, along the north side of our property.
Got it.
Of the boundary line.
I think I'll jump to Tyler, if you don't mind. Hey, Tyler.
Hello.
Thanks for being here tonight. Tyler, there's a lot of concern about the assessment being done post-flood with a broken bridge. And that's about to come back onboard. We're very excited about that, maybe bigger and wider than ever before. I know that you didn't do the tests, do your analysis before, pre-flood, and you made that clear in your last discussion. But I'm going to ask you to just tell me, maybe you have some data that speaks to how those surrounding roads have been impacted post-bridge out.
Commissioner Goldberg, so, you know, one of the biggest impacts we've seen in the area from Sunset Bridge being out has been an increase on Bowen Street. So a lot of traffic is going east on Boston over to Bowen to get up. Anecdotally, it would seem like it makes some sense that eastbound Third Avenue may have some additional traffic using Spruce to get over to Bowen to go south. You know, largely, I think a lot of those trips go back to Sunset once the bridge is open.
Yeah.
You know, the notion of the bridge being widened, yes, physically, I believe the structure is being widened. There's no additional lanes other than bike lanes. So capacity-wise of the bridge, the capacity of vehicular traffic is not going up. So it'll be more or less back to what it was pre-flood.
Got it. Now, we all wish that you had a study that was done before the bridge washed out. But maybe, do you have any data that speaks to how much the traffic has increased on Bowen? You mentioned the anecdotal traffic potential heading on Third. But would it, do you know what has actually taken place on Bowen?
I can get back to you on some numbers on that. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
It's probably, I'd be guessing if I threw a number out there.
You'd be guessing if you threw a number out there?
Yes.
Okay, I won't ask you to do that, thank you.
Commissioner Bruno?
I have a quick question for Tyler as well. Is there any way, I mean, I guess I'm just kind of, not to beat a dead horse on that whole thing, but, you know, is there some way to basically take the increase that was, you saw on Bowen and essentially, you know, deduce what sort of impact we were seeing on Sunset and maybe adjust the traffic, the traffic analysis for this development, you know, based on that number? Or is that just too unscientific to really even attempt?
Commissioner Bruno, I think we'd, I think it would be a bit of a guess to do that right now, honestly.
Any other questions, discussion? One thing that comes to my mind, this is directed at my fellow commissioners, is our second-to-last speaker, Emmanuel, and I didn't catch her last name. She was filling in for Ashley Dancer, had an excellent point about working out of one's home and the safety related to that, especially when it's certain types of businesses. So I have been struggling with the live work. It's a little bit unclear, it's still not defined very well. Joni Marsh has made it clear to us that there's ample opportunity later in the process in order to get more and more definition. And also, the applicant is saying he's willing to put it in his CCRs as to exactly what's allowed in the live work. So a lot of my fears about the live work being on Spruce Street are being allayed. But I'll throw that out there for further discussion. Commissioner Pollan?
You know what, I agree with you. That was kind of where my feelings were going. And that really is, with this project, really my biggest tension that I have is with that live work and how does that fit in with the community, not only the community that's being built, but with the community that's already around there. And as Joni had pointed out, that in the future, when this comes up again, that there will be areas where we can actually put brackets around what can and cannot go in there. So I am leaning towards accepting that part of this.
Commissioner Flagg?
I've seen in history of being a planner elsewhere, I've actually had the opportunity to look at a lot of different cohousing. And it works really, really well. And it's an alternative way of having housing in Longmont. I think that's a good thing to have. And live work, I've seen work very, very well additionally. However, one of the things that I am concerned about is the type of work that goes along with the live work in terms of what kinds of occupations. Because, for example, some occupations may require the storage of materials that we generally would not want to have where we have residential development. And I would be concerned about that kind of issue and not raising someone's anticipation about allowing certain kinds of businesses to operate that would have the storage of what could be toxic materials. And so that's a real difficult kind of thing to say, yes, let's do live work. But then later on, we're saying, but you can't do this kind of live work, which is fine, I mean, that's appropriate if it's a primarily residential area. I know that in some places where there is live work and a lot of it, that's what is there. It's zoned for live work and there aren't single-family dwellings in any kind of proximity to it. Depending on what kinds of uses go in ultimately to the live work, I think the project's a good one, especially if it is actually used as live work and not, some of it live work and some of it being just office space. And we're having little parcels of that. That's my concern, that we end up with a situation where they talked about having lots of computers and the ability for other people to come in. Well, that generates traffic because somebody will say, well, I can just drive over there and use that computer because I know it's available, and they let people do that. So that would be a consideration as to what kind of work we allow and what kind of not having live along with the work in those kinds of units. And that's a consideration.
Commissioner Bruno?
Yeah, I mean, I generally agree with what you were saying about sort of, you know, my concerns being put at ease on some of these live work things. It's something we can address later. One of my other concerns, Joni had mentioned, you know, say this parcel falls into different hands under the zoning that could not go quite as well as this one sounds like it would go. Obviously, that's been put at ease at well. I think I was also concerned about the park reduction, you know, basically just taking a two-acre park and reducing it down to, you know, .85. But I think that the park abutting up against that organic farm, that agricultural area, I think is a real plus from the way that I look at it. And just in general, I just think it's, it sounds like about the most conscientious sort of development that could happen there. And if they're, if they're not actually, you know, asking for something that takes them even, you know, to a greater density than what we have right now, which it sounds like it does. And I mean, right now, if it stays the way it is, it could be eight units per acre. You know, in my mind, it just, the things that I'm concerned about can be dealt with later or with, you know, with the sort of instant-specific changing of the zoning. And I do think, the one other thing that I'm concerned about is the fact that that traffic report was done in a time when it's, I mean, in my mind, essentially not all that valid, you know, since the bridge was out, basically. So I don't know really how to address that. But, you know, the rest of the things that were red flags to me, I feel, I feel pretty good about at this point.
Joni, correct me if I'm wrong, but we will see with the, if this goes forward as a PUDR, we would talk about traffic again later.
Chairman Chernick, certainly so. Should this go to fruition and be approved by city council, the next steps would be a preliminary plat and preliminary development plan, which both come back to you for a public hearing and final approval.
Right, okay. So that's another, just, I'll jump in. Just another reminder, we are the recommending body. We're not the decision-making body on this. So we're recommending to city council. Commissioner Teta?
Well, I'd like to start by saying I agree with Commissioner Flagg and Commissioner Bruno. The, as far as the park goes, I, my biggest concern is putting the, putting it back into the city's capital improvement fund might mean waiting a long time to get that park built. If we were going to impose any condition, I think I'd lean toward trying to get the developer to actually develop the park while the residents were still alive. The, as far as density, I mean, I think we'd probably see the same kind of density if we didn't change the zoning. And given that, we'd probably see the same kind of traffic. So makes sense that those are concerns. But if anything other than this go in, I think we're still going to see the same, same kind of effects.
And along those same lines, somebody in the public mentioned that the developer is willing to put a height restriction, to self-impose a height restriction so that the people on Spruce Street don't have their view blocked. And that, you know, any other type of development could go much higher. Actually, Katie, in a PUDR, what would be the potential height along Spruce Street if it, to maximize the height?
Chairman Chernick, for residential development PUDR, the maximum height is 35?
Okay. So self-limiting to one story is basically limiting to about, what, 15 feet, thereabouts? Okay, all right, okay, thanks. Commissioner Goldberg?
I don't know if I heard it from Mr. Spalding. Was Mr. Spalding interested in, Mr. Spalding, were you interested in capping it to single-story buildings?
Can you repeat the question?
I'm sorry, the question on the table is whether you were interested in being accommod, designating the properties to single-story buildings, specifically, specifically the buildings on Spruce?
Yeah, along Spruce. So the way we carve into the earth, you have one story. Typically, you'd see mixed use, and then above it, you'd see an apartment or something. We're taking that and putting it behind it and dropping it down. And that allows us to actually fill the rest of the property, so. Yes.
Great.
I have a question for the applicant as well, since you're up there. If we were to recommend that the mixed-use component not be permissible, would you foresee making those same units residential?
Absolutely. You know, we have a pro forma to meet, and it's an affordability issue. So regardless of whether it's mixed use or if it's a residential unit, they're going to be for-sale units. So, you know, a lot of what we're designing in this is about opportunity. And I think that a lot of what the guidelines and the LACP and what you're moving towards for future residences in the future is providing opportunity, and that's what we've been doing all along.
Thank you. If you don't mind, Michael, I'd just like to speak to that for a minute. I mean, I think that the biggest concern that the, what seemed like overwhelmingly supportive neighbors voiced was the commercial component or the potential for retail or whatever they might become. And first of all, I think we've, as a commission, been supportive and, if not encouraging, of mixed use. And we seem to have had a difficult time getting developers to sign on to the viability of that. So given that, you know, we're talking about 40 or 46 units in a, what is otherwise a residential neighborhood, I'm really skeptical of the viability of much commercial or certainly retail there anyway. So I, I think, I find a lot of the neighborhood concerns, although completely illegitimate and understandable, I just think in light of the lack of viability, probably misplaced.
Commissioner Pollan?
Katie, I have a question for you. So it was said earlier that, under normal circumstances, people can actually do work out of their house. So my question is, what's the difference, from your perspective, of having something designated live work versus somebody having a house? And I guess that this would apply to the other 40 residences potentially, that they could do work out of their house. What's the difference? What, how would we know what the difference was?
Chairman Chernick and Commissioner Pollan, I'll do my best to answer your question. And perhaps Joni can follow up with additional information. So residential units across the community are eligible for home-based businesses. There's certain restrictions, limitations associated with those. So yes, any of the other 40 units could apply for a home occupation and operate under those conditions. I think the, when we look at the section of the development code that talks about the particular kinds of use, the language that we're using here tonight is commercial or retail. But within the code, it actually calls it resident-serving commercial uses within a residential neighborhood. That's a definition that comes from the PUDR, specific purposes within the land development code. So resident-serving commercial uses, again, are going to be the uses that are permitted in R1, R2, and R3. And then uses that are, commercial uses that subscribe to additional restrictions like the commercial use is secondary to the principal residential use. So that can be looked at in terms of density. If you have a thousand unit, a thousand-square-foot unit, the commercial piece has to be the smaller piece. Also, I think if we look at this idea of resident-serving commercial uses, it goes back to, the intent is to serve primarily the people in the PUD. So that's the language that's within the land development code that gets at the potential for commercial retail uses that we're talking about, what would be allowed. Joni, do you have anything to add?
I would just note additionally that depending on the square footage, that, you know, building code comes into play a little differently at times with live work so that you're managing the occupancy separation if need be.
Following up on this, I have a question for the applicant, if you don't mind. Somebody in the public hearing mentioned that the live work uses would be established by consensus, that there would have to be consensus agreement, which is a high by consensus, that there would have to be consensus agreement, which is a high bar to, to cross as to what would be live-work. However, if somebody were, were to run a home occupation, be out of their private house, would your consensus kick in?
Out of their own house?
Right.
Within the condominium?
Yes, exactly.
So you'd still be able to take advantage of the home business aspect of it within the code. But for, you know, the consensus component, we're working off of what's called an end-street model. So if one person, when we have a topic to have consensus on, one person can veto, can be in opposition, but they only have one month to come up with an alternate plan. If they don't, then it moves forward with the consensus. So when we go through this process of developing the HOA and the declarations, or even on the site design, where the park location is, what we're going to be doing for the CSA farm, we have a variety of teams. So we have a finance-legal team, they deal with all the HOA stuff. We have a design and construction team, they're going to be present at all the owner-contractor meetings. We have a community development team, which is all based on marketing and communications between the groups. And we have a CSA team that's, does investigation on the farming, and we've visited many farms. So the consensus-building component of it is very rich within us, and we've all already gone through a high level of consensus building. So when it comes to the mixed-use components and working with the greater neighborhood, when Sharon or other, or Ruth speak to the matter, there is going to be this consideration. We are going to be sensitive to the greater neighborhoods.
But, but if I were living in just one of the houses in the cohousing, and I decided to become a CPA and start doing taxes out of my house, would I have to gain consensus from the rest of, of the cohousing to do that?
No.
Okay, so.
This would be for the mixed-use components.
Right, so there's, there's one of your differences, Commissioner Paul, and is that the live-work units will actually be held to, to a higher standard, decision-making standard by the entire community, as compared to a home occupancy allowed by code.
Can I give you one more example?
Sure.
For instance, rental policy. If I get married and, and we have kids and we're financially strapped and we want to have a renter come in, in our declarations, it states that if we have a two-car garage and we have a renter who has a car and we want to rent to that person, we would have to give up one of our cars. And that person would then have a space to rent. So we would be downsizing that way, we have a strict policy on that. So if it's storage within the unit or whatever, those individuals, the homeowners would have to give up those spaces.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion, thoughts? Oh, Commissioner Teta.
I had a question for Steve. Steve, I, I wanted to first apologize for being flip about the, the projected timeframe for a park construction, but at, at a prior development proposal, we were informed that getting on the end of the list for a park in a new development might mean a wait of 20 years. Can you speak to that?
Sure, Commissioner. The Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan that was adopted by, or accepted by city council in 2014, went through a prioritization process that created a list, and I don't have the document with me, I'd be happy to share it, it is on city website, but it has a table in the back that council did do some prioritization of projects that they want to see, that there are neighborhoods that are longer standing than the Bon Farm neighborhood that do not have access to neighborhood parks within the half-mile radius, which is determined by that master plan as a reasonable distance to recreational opportunities. The Bon Farm project was not, it was not directed by council to move that project to the end of the line, it was just not directed by council to move that to the front of the line. We, $240,000 to develop a .85-acre neighborhood park is probably relatively close to being sufficient funds. It's likely not, not sufficient, and when you throw in the design costs and the, the lack of economy of scale you get by developing a smaller park. But I, you know, council adopts a five-year CIP, but that five-year CIP is adopted every year, and we're only fully budgeted for the following year. So it'll be something that we'll be looking at with all the other park projects. There's not only a funding issue, there's a maintenance issue associated with that, there's also a staff workload that has to manage the design and construction of the park. The challenges we get into with developers developing public space, public lands, is that it doesn't necessarily save in the staff time, because we have to make, be there and make sure that they're doing everything to, to city standards. So how that, this park would fit into the overall capital improvement program with all the hundreds of millions of dollars remains to be seen, but I don't anticipate it going to the end of the line. Peter had said that he wanted it done by the middle of 2018, which he's hoping to get this project done by, and that just didn't seem, it didn't sit right with council at this point. And so that's the nature of the, the direction that was given.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldberg.
Steve, come back. Steve, what does it mean to maintain the recreational, recreational benefit of a park when it's, we got a two-acre park and a .85-acre park, how do you maintain the integrity, like the recreational value? I, I might have added that word in there, but you said from the beginning that you've worked with the planner, with the applicant to maintain the integrity or the value maybe of that park. Could you just talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, Commissioner Goldberg, there's only so much you can fit on a small parcel of land. Sports courts, ball fields, typical neighborhood park amenities, if you look at the, the final development plans that come to your, come to this commission, or preliminary development plans that come to this commission, you'll see notes on them when they're developing adjacent to a existing or future neighborhood park. We put a specific plan note on those plans that say typical amenities in neighborhood parks include sports fields, off-leash dog exercise areas, sport courts, things like that. You just can't fit them on a site, whether two acres or .85 acres, you can't physically fit them on that area. So preliminarily, I see this park having a shelter, playground, and turf with on-street parking. That's, that's about, that's likely what we could fit, whether it's two acres or .85 acres.
Got it.
That being said, we're certainly open to going through a, a robust public process to see what the community views, and it might be one, two, three, or none of those items. But, you know, with that, we certainly weigh the maintenance impacts and all that sort of, sort of, those items, and that is what we take to city council before we build any park.
Great.
Be the master plan, so.
Thanks, Steve.
Commissioner, oh, sorry.
Whoa.
Sorry.
Well, I think with that, yeah, this has been a trip for me, just this, thanks, Steve. During this evening, I have really gone through kind of a bunch of transitions and kind of evolution about where I was going with this. And, and it started off with a really inspiring presentation by the applicant, I was ready to move in to, to put on, like, you know, the CSA component and the community component, and I learned a lot about the concept of cohousing, and it's inspirational and admirable, and I look at the room full of folks who are all pursuing that, and that generally seem to embrace the idea. And so that, that I really, really enjoy, and I think most of the commissioners agree, that is a, that is a really cool project, and maybe one of the neater projects proposed to us in, in a while. But dang, there's this annoying part that a lot of the community is concerned about, and that is the retail or commercial component to it. And what could it be, and, and how much traffic will result, as a result, how much will ensue as a result of those units that are going to be these live-work pieces? You know, but we, Joni made it clear that we can address what those tenants or what those projects will be at a later time, and the applicant has mentioned that he can put it into the regulations as far as list out types of work and types of, you know, business that can go into those spaces. And so that certainly puts me at ease a little bit. And I also kind of just have the faith, as I look into the crowd, and I, I'm thinking of Daya, who said, "Look at us, we're all gray hairs or no hairs, and this is who we are." And then Ruth, who said, "We are great neighbors, it takes a certain kind of person to live here." And I was a little annoyed, I was a little, not annoyed, but I just was a little bit concerned when Mr. Spalding said that, you know, anyone can purchase that live-work space, not just a member of the Bon Farm, because I can see that you guys all believe in it, and you're like, just own it, and you won't let something naughty into your area. But, but I, I dig the consensus component to it, and it, and it sounds like you, the people, will maintain the integrity of your space. And then, of course, Ken mentioned that this could be a worse scenario, and some of our commissioners have mentioned that other projects that could come in might not be so accommodating, and might not be so inclined to get a consensus from the, from the tenants, so, or from the, from the neighborhood. So gosh, I'm really having a hard time finding a reason not to approve this project, of course, given the consideration that, and the condition that the city has outlaid, which is making sure we have that trail on the west side. So with that, I think I'll go ahead and make a motion. Let me see if I just needed, wanted to specify anything else. You know, the traffic has been a recurring issue, and for that, we turn to Tyler. And Tyler said, although his numbers are post-flood, he was talking about the impact being from .1% to .3% of capacity. We're talking about, still, these, these roads can handle much more capacity, more than most of the folks in the audience think is accurate. But these are the numbers that we go off of, and every neighborhood believes that their roads can't maintain the amount of traffic that Tyler's data says, but those are the numbers we have to go off of. And according to his numbers, we have 70% more capacity before we have to do much. And so considering that the space could be used for similar density, and considering that the concept plan is tied to the application, and that if this starts to fall apart, we'll have to, we'll all be here again, I'm going to move forward with making a motion to approve PZR 2016-9B with the condition as stated by, in the packet, which is that we maintain a, let me just read it specifically, a trail on the west side. And if someone has that quicker than I do, "The developers shall construct a pedestrian trail along the west side of the property from Spruce to the southern boundary of the property in conjunction with the residential development."
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, do we have a second, or is there a discussion?
First of all, I will second it. Second of all, I do want to thank the public for coming out to this. Actually, it was very nice to hear you, it was very nice to hear the mutual respect between both parties. And that's something that we usually don't see, but it was very nice. I, I can see in the future that you both respect each other, and I think with that respect, that will help you build the bridge, help you be able to go to each other to address any kind of issues that may come up. But I do want to commend Peter that I love this, this, this project, I think it's something that Longmont needs, and I just, just applaud you for putting it in, so I'll second it.
Okay. I'll just throw in my two cents as well, which is, is that initial conditions matter, and, and precedent, precedents matter. And if we're going to do cohousing, let's knock it out of the park, let's go whole hog, you know, let's go ahead with live-work and, and trust that this neighborhood, Bon Farm Neighborhood Association and the cohousing folks are going to do it right. So I'm totally in favor as well. Now, any more discussion from the commission? Let's take a vote. Okay, that passes unanimously seven to zero. So this item will now be forwarded to the Longmont City Council for action. If you're unfamiliar with council procedures and intend to appear before council, please contact the planning division for further information at 303-651-8330. Thank you to everybody for your patience, and we have more on our agenda if you want to stay, and we will move forward. Next up is item seven, extension of time limits for approval of development plan for St. Francis of Assisi Church, senior planner Eva Peracevsky and Commissioner Flagg.
I need to be recused on this.
Okay, please recuse yourself, thank you very much. Okay, Eva.
Good evening, Chair Chernak and Commissioners Eva Peracevsky, Senior Planner, Planning and Development Services. The second item on the agenda hopefully won't take quite as long. This is the St. Francis of Assisi Church preliminary PUD plan extension request. I'm trying to use this new technology here. So I'm just gonna, for those of you who weren't here with the preliminary approval, I'm just gonna kind of give you a quick background on this. So, use my mouse here. So this is the project site right here, this is at the southeast corner of Pike and Airport Roads. The site is, this is the whole site, is, is my mouse is trying to go around all this. The site is 14 acres. As you can see, the east half is developed here, the west half remains undeveloped, and there's no current plans for developing that west half. And this is, the inset here is a photo of the built, the first phase of the church property right here, if you may have already seen it. This church here is about 18,000 square feet, and as you can see, sorry, I'm trying to move my mouse, there's 153 paved parking spaces here on the south end of the church property, and that's all built out. So I'm just going to walk you through the background for those of you who aren't familiar with this. So this church got a preliminary PUD and a height exception approval from PNZ back in 2010. And that approval, the preliminary PUD included two phases, and phase one was the 18,000-square-foot church on two levels, which is out there now. And it also included a rectory building, and for those of you who aren't familiar with what a rectory is, that's where the priest lives. And so in phase two, there was to be a 14,000-square-foot addition, and that addition included additional worship space and offices and religious education for kids, didn't mean Catholic school, just meant like, you know, Sunday school type of thing. And it also included a 45-foot bell tower as part of the second phase. And so Planning Commission approved this in December of 2010, and the project was appealed by some neighbors to council after the public hearing council upheld Planning and Zoning Commission's approval. However, they added a condition limiting the height of the bell tower to 40 feet. Okay, so we move forward, and phase one of the building, the church, got constructed, got its building permits, and it got a certificate of occupancy on March 13th, 2013. And the rectory, which was part of phase one, was pushed out to phase two for budget constraints, and, and so Father Maroni and Rick Neiman will discuss that, that's, that was their decision to push the rectory to phase two. And so the land development code sets a limit of three years, and they would have had to have submitted development, a final development plan for that phase two, or apply for building permits. And so their entitlements expire on March 13th. Is that right? March 18th, I'm sorry, no, March 13th. I think it's 18th, I'm sorry, I made a typo. It is the 18th, I do apologize for that. And so unless the, the land development code says if 30 days prior to your expiration, you submit an extension request to the planning department, they will take it back to the original decision-making body to decide on that extension. So that was done in a timely manner. And so the applicant is, in this case, requesting a three-year extension of their PUD, so it would be extended till 2019. So this is the approved PUD plan, I'll just walk it through you real quick with the mouse, I am hard of seeing. But this dark gray area is the church, the 18,000-square-foot church on the two levels that's already built out, that's out there on, right now. I apologize, but if you've got the screen in front of you, you'll see, there's a little, there's little squiggly outlines up here on the northeast of the church, and a little bit over here north of the church, and that is- And that is that phase two addition, that's fourteen thousand square feet. And in addition, as you'll see here and maybe better on your screen, there are some outlines of parking spaces that kind of go around in a ring. As you see, the, the parking is completed over here on the south end and with phase two, when they built the addition, they were going to do additional parking to accommodate the additional worship area that would go around in a ring and drop out into Pike Road. And here, down here on the southwest corner of the church, is the rectory building, which would be part of phase two. And I think that includes everything. Oh, and one other thing I wanted to mention, it's not here, but it'll be on the elevations, is phase two included a bell tower on that addition. And that bell tower was initially proposed at forty-five feet and it was limited to forty feet by city council. And so that, that would stay, that condition. And so again, phase two would include the rectory. So I'll just walk you through the elevations real quick, just to show you. Sorry, my mouse isn't working here. This is the existing church that's already out there and this is that phase two addition. And as you can see up here is the bell tower, which would go kind of closer to the phase one part. And then down here, this is just the north elevation. And again, this is what phase two would look like right here and this is the as-built church over here on the north elevation. And this is the rectory that I was talking about, that was kind of on the southwest corner. So it's a kind of a ranch, but it has a walkout basement. So just kind of wrapping it up, this is a pretty straightforward request so that, again, the church is asking for a three-year extension on this approval. They say they need a little more time for fundraising to get phase two out of the ground. And again, we've, we've shown on the staff report, it continues to meet the review criteria for approval of the PUD and the height exception. And that's in Resolution 2016-7A. So if this were approved tonight, the applicant has until March eighteenth, 2019, to submit a final development plan for phase two. And then that final development plan is approved administratively with staff so long as it is exactly consistent with the preliminary PUD. So that's, that's all we have from staff. We do have Father Frank Maroni from St. Francis Church, who will speak a little bit about the request, as well as Rick Neerman from Eidos Architects, who designed the building. And if you have any questions for me, of course, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Eva, I have a quick question. So if they still continue to need more time after 2019, can they reapply for another extension or do they only get one?
All right. Chair Sharnick, that's a good question. The land development code is silent on that. It doesn't say you only get one extension and then you have to start over. So potentially, they could come back in 2019 and ask for another extension. And again, we will review it against whatever the review criteria are in our code at that time.
All right. Any other questions for Eva? Seeing none, let's, Commissioner Paul.
What is the staff's recommendation?
Chair Sharnick, Commissioner Paul, and staff's recommending approval of Resolution 2016-7A, which is to extend it without additional conditions.
Okay. Father Maroni?
Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for your service to the community and the opportunity to be here. And if I start to babble, it's past my bedtime, so maybe it's yours also. I will try to be very quick here. With the Catholic Church in the Archdiocese of Denver, which is the entire northern third of Colorado, typically, when a new church is started, it is phased in. So you do the first phase with as much money as you have at the time. You start serving the community and building up the community and eventually starting paying down any loans you have and then start planning for the future again. This has always been a phased project there, as was stated in our original 2011 report to the, to the council. So we are looking forward to, we've just started considering the phase two proposal already, gotten some preliminary cost figures, which are scary again for us. But we're going to be starting work with the Archdiocese, who is our co-sponsor for all of this here, and they require that we meet very stringent conditions, much more stringent than typical construction that you might see. So we have to start working with them to begin planning whether they're going to require us to do another feasibility study before we start looking at another capital campaign. But we're hoping to begin doing some of that this fall or even early next year, if necessary there. And from what the preliminary figures are on the construction costs right now for the phase two, because it will also include not only the new worship space, we have to, they'll say redecorate, what's the word? We have to repurpose some of the existing facilities there. The current church is in what's going to become the parish hall, so we have to change that and put a full kitchen in there. The downstairs hall will be partitioned off and become more meeting rooms and office space for the, for the community there. So we're already seeing two of our four services in the weekend are getting close to standing room only, so we're beginning to plan for the future here. Don't know if I, any questions that you have that I didn't cover?
I have a quick question for Father Maroni. When you say that the Archdiocese requires you to build to a higher standard, is that like in terms of the quality of the construction and longevity of the building?
Yeah. And they always, working with the contractors, that they say, most contractors don't understand, because we're building for a hundred years to last, at least a hundred years. And sometimes they're saying, well, it's a commercial building, whatever, but they really want more than like a gymnasium-style building.
And, and so that significantly increased your costs, your cost projections?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Great. Any other questions for Father Maroni at this time? Did, did you have another segment to your presentation from, or?
We're ready to go more in-depth if you, if you would like to see more.
Well, how about if we open it up to the public hearing section? Then we'll open it up after that to discussion and, and we'll go more in-depth then.
Okay. Thank you.
So Jane is checking to see if anybody's signed up to speak. Was that a no, Jane? Oh, you do, okay.
Thank you.
Ah, let's see. Okay, we do have somebody on the list. Looks like Rick Neerman?
That's the, that's the applicant.
Oh, that's the applicant, okay.
I just put it down because I didn't know if you had.
Oh, got it. Okay, all right. So is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this issue that has not signed up? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing item and go back to discussion about this. Anything from the commission? Any questions? Commissioner Bruno?
I'm just a little unclear on exactly, I know we're passing an extension here, and what is, what is the height of the bell tower if we grant this motion?
Well, that, that was limited to forty feet in height by, by the city council.
Okay, so what we would be, we would be passing forty feet?
Right, yeah. Nothing, nothing would change in terms of the planning or, or any other requirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Concerns? Anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Goldberg?
Thank you, Chairman Sharnick. I harbor no concerns with this. Yeah, I'm, listen, I think this is a project that council already approved before. They need a little bit more time. I recognize that funding can come in waves and, and maybe they just need a little bit more time. I'm having trouble finding any reason not to approve this extension. So with that, I'll go ahead and recommend approval of PZR 2016-7A. Excited to hear any feedback from the rest of the commission.
Second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Bruno. Any further discussion? Let's take a vote. And that passes six to zero. Of course, Commissioner Flague has recused for that vote. So thank you to the applicant. Good luck with your fundraising. Appreciate all you do for the community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we will move on to item eight, West Grange Second Filing. Thank you, Eva, for your work on this. Thanks for being here so late. West Grange Second Filing, Preliminary Pla, Preliminary PUD Development Plan on Variances with Planner Ben Ortiz. We need to get Commissioner Flague back in here if we could. Or Joni's going to start us off.
Chairman Sharnick and members of the commission, before Ben gets started, I just wanted to bring your attention to a late arriving item that you received, I believe yesterday, with some information around the airport. So that communication was actually a miscommunication and should not be considered in your purview this evening. That is, the, the information went to airport staff from DRC staff and did not get communicated back through the staff channel properly. So to be clear, that the current airport influence zone, while it is designated on our comp plan and reviewed, is, is not a land use tool and the airport board and does not have any purview to provide you all with a recommendation on land use. So that would not be the correct avenue for that information. There are also no restrictions in the zoning code or the current comp plan that would prohibit residential land use in the airport influence zone. And so obviously, this project this evening was annexed to the city some time ago. The concept plan does portray all of the residential uses that are part of that concept plan in one filing that you'll see tonight. So I just wanted to take that off the table if I could before Ben got going.
And, okay, thank you very much, Joni. And Ben, just a point of order that I always forget, just these things. I need to read the appeal process for the item seven, which we just concluded. That item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing. Must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period. The appeal period begins Thursday, March seventeen, eight a.m., ends Wednesday, March twenty-three, five p.m. Thank you, Ben, for your patience.
Thank you for yours. You've had some long nights recently. Chairman Sharnick, members of the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Commission, Council Member Finley, good evening. Ben Ortiz, Planning and Development Services. The West Grange Filing Two project is for a preliminary plat and a preliminary PUD development plan, and it's for a four-hundred-and-ninety-nine unit housing development. It's located in the southeast corner of Nelson Road and then North Seventy-Fifth Street and is delineated by this red line here. The project property is approximately ninety-five acres. It's zoned mixed-use planned unit development as well as residential planned unit development. Seagate is immediately to the north here. Silver Creek High School is off here to the east. West Grange Filing One and the Blue Mountain Elementary School, and West Grange Filing One are to the south. And then lastly, pretty much everything west of, excuse me, North Seventy-Fifth Street is Boulder County property. The project also includes two variances. The first would result in the elimination of the required two-foot-by-two-foot masonry fence posts spaced every sixty feet for the Nelson Road perimeter fence. The second one is a forty-one-foot-six-inch variance from the required delineated edge of wetland for the wetland adjacent to Dry Creek, which would put the wetland within fifty-eight feet six inches of the nearest residential lot. The applicant is also requesting modifications to the recommended, I say that in air quotes, setback standards. They are requesting a blanket five-foot side yard setback and a blanket twelve-foot rear yard setback for all the single-family residential development. So the development will include a hundred and forty-two single-family front-loaded dwelling units, eighty-one single-family alley-loaded units, forty-two duplexes, and two-hundred-and-thirty-four multifamily residential units. The multifamily apartments will be located in the northwest corners and the northeast corner of the development. The duplexes are depicted in, in red here. Actually, that's West Grange Filing One. My apologies. Here, here. The single-family front-loaded units are in this kind of a yellowish color here. And then the single-family alley-loaded, alley-loaded units are represented by this peach color. There are pocket parks dispersed throughout the development. The applicant will be dedicating ten acres for the development of a neighborhood park down in this area here. And all the common open spaces shown in green, which includes the ten acres of land, that the applicant will be dedicating to the city for the future neighborhood park. So all the lots are required to be set back a hundred feet from the delineated edge of a wetland for non-primary greenways. Lot four, block eighteen, which is right here, is within fifty-eight feet six inches from the nearest edge of the Dry Creek wetland. And this represents a forty-one-foot-six-inch variance to the one-hundred-foot setback requirement. The distance between the lots on either side of Lot four, block eighteen, also represents a variance to the standard, but they're further away. Lot three, which is here, is seventy-two feet away roughly. And Lot five here is sixty-two feet away from the edge of the wetland. All the other lots in the development meet the buffering requirement. Staff does support the variance request. We feel that the additional three residential units is more important than strictly adhering to the one-hundred-foot wetland buffer requirement due to the housing shortage in the city. So the land development code requires two-foot-by-two-foot masonry columns every sixty feet for perimeter fences. The applicant is proposing to add two two-foot-by-two-foot stone columns for the six-foot perimeter fences at the entrance to the arterials only. So this means that the Nelson Road six-foot privacy fence, which is here, will only have two columns, one at both ends. And this is a variance that staff does not support. PUDs are supposed to provide a high-quality design and the Nelson Road fencing will be highly visible to the motoring public. So staff feels that the fence should be of a higher-quality design than what is proposed, given its location. And this here is the example of what that privacy fence would look like along with that two-foot-by-two-foot masonry. along with that two-foot-by-two-foot masonry. So, we'd have one of these on either ends of the fence, one here, one here, but nothing in between. And the code does clearly state that we do need those every 60 feet. So, for PUDs, the recommended separation between single-story, single-family residential dwellings is 10 feet. For two-story, single-family residential dwellings, the recommended separation is 15 feet, which translates into five-foot and seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setbacks, respectively. The applicant is requesting a blanket five-foot side yard setback between all single-family residential, regardless of whether they're single-story or two-story structures. For PUDs, the recommended rear yard setback is 20 feet. The applicant is proposing a 12-foot blanket rear yard setback. Again, I want to point out that the operative word here is "recommended" in the PUD standards. The setbacks are not required. They are recommended. The applicant applied the requested setbacks to West Grange Filing One successfully and are now requesting similar setbacks for Filing Two. And staff does support the setback request. Staff feels this is justified as the applicant has supplied common open space in excess of what is required. The architecture also appears to be of a high-quality design, and the requested setbacks don't represent variances. Rather, they are PUD modifications. And this slide shows nine of the proposed single-family models and includes both single-story and two-story structures. And the models include Prairie-style Traditional Farmhouse and Colorado Craftsman Design. So, you have the Prairie-style here on the left. The Traditional Farmhouse is in the middle. And then the Colorado Craftsman's off on the right side of your screen. And this slide includes six additional single-family models as well as three duplex models on the right-hand side of your screen. So, over here are the proposed duplex models. So, in sum, there will be 15 single-family models proposed for the development. And then lastly, this slide shows the, what the multifamily buildings will look like up in the northeast and northwest quarters of the development. So, there hasn't been much, by way of interest, on the part of the surrounding property owners. We had six people attend the neighborhood meeting. None of them really were in opposition to the project. And in response to our notice of application, as well as the notice of public hearing, staff hasn't received any comments, good or bad or indifferent regarding this project. So, we sent referral packets to several agencies. They're listed on your screen. Of these, we heard from the St. Brain Valley School District, Excel Energy, and Federal Aviation Administration. The St. Brain Valley School District evaluated the project, supports the project, as no school feeder would exceed the benchmarks. And they requested cash in lieu of land dedication, and that would be used toward addressing additional students in the surrounding schools. Excel Energy noted that they own and operate existing natural gas distribution facilities and portions of the development. They request the developer contact Excel for any new gas service or modifications to the existing facilities. And then lastly, the Federal Aviation Administrated, Administration noted that a file form 7460-1, which is called a Notice of Proposed Construction Alteration, would be required if one of three conditions occur as a result of the development. The first would be if any of the portion of the project is within 20,000 feet of a public use runway and breaks a 100-to-one plane coming off of the nearest point of the nearest runway. The second scenario would be if any portion of the project is more than 200 feet above ground level at any location. And then the last scenario would be if there are any structures requiring an FCC license or there is potential for navigation equipment interference. So, none of the criteria are applicable to this project. So, staff does recommend approving the West Grange Filing Two Preliminary Plat, Preliminary PUD Development Plan and the 41-foot-six-inch variance from the required 100-foot buffer between the delineated edge of wetland and adjacent development, with conditions, as reflected in PZR 2016-8B, on the condition that the plan satisfy all development review committee requirements and comply with all city standards, unless specifically approved as an exception or PUD modification to include, but not limited to, the provision of the two-foot-by-two-foot masonry fence posts every 60 feet along the Nelson Road perimeter. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. We also have someone here from our engineering staff to tackle some of your engineering questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Commissioner Goldberg?
Ben, thanks for the presentation and your work on the project. I just have a real quick question about those three lots that impede upon the wetlands. What type of, would you just clarify what type of structures there? Are they single-family or duplexes or multifamily?
Commissioner Goldberg, those will be single-family residential. Confirm that. Yes, that's correct. Single-family residential.
And would you just please repeat your justification on why it's worth it to allow these three lots to kind of impede into the wetlands?
As you know, there's a significant housing shortage within the city of Longmont, and we found that, based on the design that's proposed, the only way of not, of avoiding this variance would be to not build those structures. So, we would be short three housing units in this development. I also want to note, too, that the city modeled their floodplain, and they found, and the city's floodplain boundary is somewhat more conservative than the FEMA floodplain. And that floodplain ends at that landscape buffer, that greenway buffer, which is just north of that wetland. So, you're going to have the greenway buffer as well as, which is right in here, as well as the bike path. And as I understand it, that the elevation of that buffer is approximately a foot higher. And so, the, so these properties will be outside of the 100-year floodplain. And then the actual structures themselves, you know, given the setback requirements that the applicant's requesting, they're going to be close to, you know, 60 feet away, somewhere around there.
Great. And the concern about the wetland is exactly that. It's flood concern. It's not animals or plants or, you know, something else.
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Goldberg, actually, I think it's all of it. But this is, this is not considered a primary greenway. It's a secondary greenway. So, it's not one of the more valued ones. It is valued, but not as highly as the primary greenways. Those do require 150-foot buffers, but this one is not a significant greenway.
Thanks, Ben.
Commissioner Bruno?
Yeah, I have a question related to Commissioner Goldberg's. I'm just wondering, when you say that, when you say that the property, while near a wetland, will not directly impact the wetlands, is that the result of some kind of input from Fish and Wildlife, anybody like that? Or is it basically the planning people?
I believe that is, well, we, the applicant is working with the, currently working with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they're seeking a 404 permit. Largely, it is, it's staff's contention that this won't have a significant impact on the wetlands. But we haven't heard from any, any referral agencies other than those three. And so, we sort of assume that there's not a lot of concern there.
Thanks.
Commissioner Flage?
Ben, I had a question on the fences, the fence and the pillar there. So, for what amount or distance along Nelson Road would that apply? And is that also something that you also want to round the corner going south?
Commissioner Flage, let me answer your first question first, your second question first. It does not appear to be wrapping around that, while my plans are not super clear. And so, I believe it is, because we're looking at perimeter fences, then really what we're looking at is that, that portion of fencing that immediately abuts Nelson Road. So, you look down here, for example. This looks to be also a six-foot privacy fence. However, that is just privacy fence separating the multifamily from the lower-density residential immediately to the south. And so, this was, is not what we would regard as perimeter fencing necessarily. Perimeter fencing is that fencing which would go run around the entire property. And so, we're really only looking between, between these two entry points here. As far as that distance is concerned, I haven't scaled it off, so I don't know exactly what that is. I could take a stab at it if you'd like. I mean, I have plans, but they're not to scale. But I think I could figure it out if you give me a minute.
Well, my question really relates to how much of Nelson Road for this whole development is really affected? Does the fence actually, is it along the area that's multifamily or just the area that's single-family? And why is it important along the single-family but not the other areas and not along, I guess it's 75th?
Sure. Commissioner Flage, so it is that area between this dot and this dot. And I believe that along the multifamily portion, we are looking at the lower fencing here. Why is that important? Well, you know, solid privacy fences, they do provide sound attenuation. So, we are looking at this providing a buffer for the backyards to those lower residential neighborhoods, those single-family developments that immediately abut Nelson Road. Because most people that live in the multifamily portion of the development won't be hanging out outside here in this portion immediately abutting Nelson Road. That portion, or the privacy fence, is not as critical at that location where the residents that live in these will be probably spending significant amounts of time in their backyards.
So, how important is the pillar system that you're talking about, Ben? It's only on one side of the street there, of the two streets coming in and out on both sides?
Well, for PUDs are supposed to be of a higher-quality design aesthetically than non-PUDs. And so, in exchange for higher-quality design, the developers are afforded a little more flexibility, which is one of the reasons why the setbacks are recommended within the PUD section versus required. In a, in a straight zoning R1, R2, R3, the setbacks are fixed. And so, in exchange for that, then again, like I said, higher-quality design. That means higher-quality fencing, higher-quality architecture, more common open space. And so, we felt that, given that this is a very highly-visible stretch of, this development will be very highly-visible to the Nelson Road motorists and other members of the public. We felt that that would just augment the development.
Commissioner Pollan?
Getting back to the wetland setback. At first blush, when I hear 41 feet out of 100, that seems like a lot. I know we have done setbacks or done variances before. I'm just wondering if you can tell us, or maybe if Development Services Manager Marsh can tell us, what we have done in the past as far as variances, what we've allowed, just to see kind of what we've done in the past.
There is the Grand View Apartments, right? About 20 feet.
This is good. Everybody start thinking these up, okay? So, Ben and I are coming up with Golden Pond Storage. Some of you may have been on for that. The one that Commissioner Shernick just mentioned, which was the Grand View Meadows Apartments, which I believe Don brought probably a year and a half, two years ago. And I know that we've also, there is an ability for site plans that don't come before you for the planning director, myself, to waive those. There have been a couple instances where we've had a couple of ditches that really weren't meant to be classified in this section, but that's how the code ended up getting written. So, according to our floodplain manager at the time, that was not the intent. So, we have waived a couple of those on some commercial developments, almost in their entirety, simply because they weren't. The study that was put together was, clearly showed that there wasn't a need for that type of a setback, and it was kind of an error on the city's part. So, that's happened, I believe, on two occasions, probably in the last six or seven years. Yeah, Harvest Junction North. I believe Don brought that one forward as well. See if everybody starts thinking. At 11 o'clock, we'll think of all of them. I think that we've had instances, probably Harvest Junction North was one of the bigger ones, I would guess, that we have had. And, you know, maybe Grand View Meadows, I think, from a residential standpoint, may have been the one that was also the closest to multifamily.
And I remember with Grand View, they actually had done some birmingham or buffering, which kind of helped us get over the hump of approving that. I haven't gone into the specs here. Have they, is there any kind of landscaping or birmingham or anything on that southern portion?
Commissioner Pollan, so, let me see if I can find another that might actually show it better. So, if you follow this trail here, this is, this is part of a greenway trail. And that will be an actual developed greenway trail. I don't have the exact elevations, but in speaking with our drainage engineer, from what I gather, we're looking at about a one-foot increase in elevation between the edge of the wetland and the edge of the, or the edge of the, that particular, those particular lots. And so, it's not significant. But they're out of the 100-year floodplain. And so, the likelihood of flooding, while it's there, especially since the Noah's flood was, is omnipresent in our minds, certainly possible, but it's not likely to happen in our lifetime.
Ben, I have a question for you. On the PUD plan, the total number of units is, adds up to 599, but your report is saying 499. So, you know, why do we have a difference?
499 was always the number.
Really? Okay. Is it just?
The applicant is here, and he.
Sure. Ah, yes, it is 10 minutes to 11:00. So, we need to decide whether we continue past 11 o'clock, according to our bylaws. Otherwise, we would have to continue to a date certain. So, would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we continue on with the meeting and go through this last item.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Goldberg. Let's take a vote by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we will continue past 11 o'clock. Sorry. Sorry, any names? Okay, my, Robert's rules have already started getting a little slippery. Okay, so if the applicant would like to speak to the difference in our numbers here. And then, once we get done with this, we'll have you make your presentation too. Oh, press the button there, please, yes.
Hello, this is Chad Kipfer. The answer to that question is that the overall West Grange project is approved for 599.
Okay.
Phase one, which is down in the lower left-hand corner, has 100 units on it. So that's the 499 is just the northern portion of the PUD that we're presenting this amendment for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kipfer. Any further questions for Ben? Otherwise, we'll go to the applicant's presentation. Seeing none, let's have Mr. Kipfer present.
Hello. All right, I do have a presentation. I'm going to go through it fairly quickly. I will invite any questions afterwards when we go into more detail. Obviously, we're with Markel Homes. We're a brand name for quality and value. We're a certified Energy Star builder. And I'd ask you to please check our website, markelhomes.com, if you'd like to see some of the other projects that we're working on. We're a local builder and developer for over 40 years. We develop and build a diversity of housing product with a lot of different styles and designs, from single-family townhomes, multifamily, mixed use. We have a product style that we like called New West, which is basically new building materials, environmental preservation, water conservation, and fresh architectural design. On the comprehensive plan, that's West Grange there in the southwest corner. It meets the comprehensive plan in terms of the zoning intensities of the project. The vicinity right here, I think Ben hit all of these. This is just showing where Boulder County is, Nelson Road, 75th Street, the different schools, Seagate around the properties. A little bit of history quickly. So the property was annexed in 2005 under the Kobatz Archdiocese's name. There was an overall PUD approved in 2008, but it wasn't constructed at that time. There were 34 acres that were dedicated to the city in 2010 for the community and neighborhood park, which is the green area on my map. Markel got involved in 2012, and Phase One was plotted per the overall PUD in 2013. And the Phase One improvements and there's home construction is ongoing right now. This is the concept plan. We amended the annexation agreement concept plan in 2014 to align with the submitted PUD. The plan that's before you tonight is exactly the same, other than just a couple minor tweaks on alleys and separation pieces to it. This map is showing that Phase One is complete. The land dedication area has been dedicated to the city, and that we're ready to submit for the Phase Two final plan upon your approval. This is the concept plan, so it is 599 DU overall. Phase One had 100 units down below, which were the 20 duplex, the 80 single-family lots. And then the PUD that we have right here, which I think is an excellent land planning design of park it, of, excuse me. Let's see if I can. There is kind of pocket nodes here and here. And this area that's in here is an additional 10-acre public land dedication that will go to the city. So this project is dedicating a lot, has dedicated a lot of land and will dedicate more with it. The six-foot privacy fence, and my understanding on the privacy fence when we were originally submitting it is we were presenting a privacy fence that didn't have stone columns on it. It was just brought up recently in the last week or so that a privacy fence would be allowed on a long and arterial road, excuse me, I'm a little tired, as long as it has stone column, masonry columns at every, at 60-foot intervals. I believe that's correct. And it's a point of reference, the lots that are shown there in yellow are about 52, 60 feet. That's kind of like a marker of where those columns would be. So I think, and we are fine with that condition to use that, so we're okay with that. The bulk standards were per the previously approved PUD that was in place from a long time ago, and it's what's being used in the filing one, and it's what we've been using in a lot of successful developments around. The reduced buffer on the Dry Creek, I think there might have been a little bit of confusion in the discussion on that. The wetland itself is actually just the inside of the old irrigation ditch in that the 100-foot buffer to wetland, you know, would be from the edge of the ditch to where the lots are. We're asking for that to be reduced. There's actually no wetlands that are being impacted by the single-family homes that are there or pushing into floodplains. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified. Also, in the area that is dedicated, the 34 acres that were dedicated, that's a plan that the city's working on. It's a very large regional plan. And that ditch, my understanding from Steve Rainswiler, when we were meeting with him a couple weeks ago, would actually be further away from what the lots are. But this variation would give the flexibility of where it is right now, if it wasn't to change, so that we could move forward with that. This is a phasing diagram to show Phase One obviously is complete, Phase Two, Three, Four, and Five, kind of how this could work around. Mountain Drive would be completed with the next phase, Two. The wetland permit that he was, that Ben was mentioning is for where the road crosses the greenway. There are some wetlands that those are covering through. I do have a wetland permit in hand through the Army Corps of Engineers for the section of Mountain Drive to cross that. It takes a long time, and I applied about a year ago for that when we were originally submitting in March of 2015 for this PUD. Overall, West Grange is a great project for the city of Longmont with many benefits. Excellent land planning, quality, community development, land dedications, park sites, trail connections. There's a diversity of housing types. The conditions of approval, we agree with them. That's okay. Phase Two final plans are ready to submit. We want to start Phase Two this summer. We're looking forward to that. And this is what I'm going to go through really, really quickly. And if you want to, if you would like to ask some questions about it, I'm happy to go over to it. But we have a number of different programs called Easy Living Different Services. We provide above and beyond HOA services for residents at different areas. Just some examples of the open, fresh architecture, open floor plans detailing. We also have a concept creation where we build custom houses for people on different segments of lots, from design development. We also have a very large holistic approach to sustainability that isn't just greenwashing, but certified on Energy Star Building, recycled materials, low VOC paints. We offer indoor air quality options through the EPA. Homeowner education, some locations of infill developments that are walkable pedestrian, have excellent street scrapes. And we have a fresh styles and architecture that I think that fits into that holistic package of what sustainability can be. And then just a couple other slides of some of the details and products that we have. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I also have Michael Markel, who's owner of Markel Homes, is here. My civil engineer is here as well. So if you have any questions for them, we'd be hence happy to answer any of them.
Commissioner Pollin.
Can you clear something up? You mentioned something about the course of that ditch changing potentially. Did you mention something about that with the Recreation Department?
There is a plan that's in place. And I, 34 acre, so that land dedication area there that's in green on that map, that is a part of the Dry Creek Park area, and the city's been developing that to the east. They have plans for it into the portion that's green on this plan. And so looking on this map right here, you can see that is basically the existing ditch that's out there, which is an older irrigation ditch. It's not too wide. But the plans that they have, at least the plans that I've seen from Steve and the city's been presenting for that, have different kinds of birmingham or potential adjustments that could happen in there. Since that hasn't been constructed, you know, when we're trying to work with staff and with the city for what they want to do, and the lots that are close to that were in the exact same location, the ditch was in the same location when it was approved previously. It's not in the floodplain. There's a trail that's a greenway buffer that's below it. So it feels like it's, it's an appropriate request. I don't know if that answered your question. I apologize, a little late.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? I have a question for you. I was looking at your parking numbers, and you're providing a lot of parking.
Yes.
But I did notice that there were a couple of locations that actually had a deficit. Like, for example, Block 13 with the apartments, you were down by, I don't know, like a dozen spaces or so. So in those kind of scenarios, what do you expect those residents to do? I mean, how is that going to play out in terms of the overall plan?
I think the way it's going to play out is that we won't have a parking deficit on those, on that plan, on the final plan for it. I don't want to say that's an error per se, but the parking ratios would be per bedrooms, you know, space per bedroom in there, and we would meet that requirement.
Okay, okay. So you don't see an issue?
I'm not seeing an issue with that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we need to make this a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Kipfer.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing item. If there's, there is, somebody signed up to speak. Is Dan Peters still here? Not seeing Dan Peters. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak who did not sign up? Not seeing anyone. We will close the public hearing item. Whoop, did somebody raise their hand? No? Okay. Public hearing item is closed. We'll go back to discussion amongst the commission and questions. Commissioner Goldberg.
Ben, I think you're the one who probably types in the blue. Is that correct? That's your writing, not the applicant's? I'm sorry, in the packet, there's, I believe, the
Oh, yes.
Defense against the condition, if you will. The phrase, "A lack of workforce housing has been identified in the project meets a critical need" for attached housing within the city. I guess my question is, what exactly is workforce housing? Does that suggest an element of affordability, and does this project meet that?
Okay, my apologies. So generally, when we refer to workforce housing, we're looking at, you know, the multifamily component, which is, you know, the rentals. And of course, the rentals have varying degrees of cost based on the number of bedrooms that you would, you know, you can get. Obviously, they don't require large capital expenditures as what would be required for if you were to purchase a single-family home. And so, you know, a young professional would be able to afford to live within an apartment complex. And so certainly, the apartments do meet that criteria of meeting that workforce housing need.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner Bruno.
I'm still a little uncomfortable with that wetland thing. I feel like, you know, it seems like there's a lot of sort of variability in this. I mean, if we knew for sure that this wetland was sort of going to move, or, you know, just basically what the plan was for that in the future, I feel like I might feel a little bit better about that variance. But to cut it, to cut the variance requirements almost in half with the justification of three single-family units being some, you know, thing we need in the town, I feel like is maybe not. It just isn't sounding right to me, you know? And, you know, especially with these kind of developments with the single-family homes and the landscaping and the various herbicides and all that sort of thing that these owners will in all likelihood be employing, you know, as liberally as they want. I'm just not, I'm not feeling too good about that one. I mean, this development alone has almost 600 units, so I don't think three is proper justification, without more information essentially.
Commissioner Teta.
It isn't the need for housing that maybe has me swayed on that variance as much as believing that the creek, if you will, is more of a tailing. It's the same tailing, I believe, we discussed at the Grand View Meadows hearing. And I feel like that's kind of, the trade-off we're getting with a walkway or a greenway back there is an improvement. I happen to live in that area, so. My biggest concern, I think, is with the consistency of the fencing along Nelson. I not only, you know, concur with Ben's insistence on the two-foot masonry pillars, or whatever we call them, but I think I'd like to see something really similar, if at maybe a lower height that seemed consistent, that also faced Nelson on the multifamily just to the, just to the east. So those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Pollin.
First of all, for the fence, I do agree with Ben, and for the consistency, I, you know, I do agree that we should hold them to that. The wetback variance and
Wetland?
Wetland. Sorry.
It is late.
So I agree with, I got the same feelings as Commissioner Bruno. What I'm wondering, though, is what they did over at Grand View Meadow and on the east side over there is there's a lot of berms throughout that walk area. I'm wondering if we put up a condition that they put in some berms. It doesn't have to be a continuous berm, but just some berms to help break that up. It gives a little protection against flooding, and it also gives a little protection to any wildlife, too. Because as Ben mentioned, it's kind of a dual thing. It's not only the flooding, but there's also the concern for the wildlife. And if we put that berm, especially with them being houses and potentially having kids and stuff playing, I think that might help give a little bit of a buffer.
But there will be a fence there. They will have a fence. So Commissioner Bruno.
Yeah, I agree. I just feel like there seems to be, you know, some, like, to put down a condition like that, I'm not sure if, I personally feel like we know enough about those conditions exactly. And, you know, maybe if someone from Fish and Wildlife or someone like that can chime in and verify that that's a good idea, I think I would be, you know, in support of that condition. I mean, I feel like this particular area that we're talking about is Phase Six of this project, and assuming that they're kind of going to go in that order. I'm not sure what I'm trying to suggest here, but maybe some sort of appeal for some more, some more data on that, other than, you know, it's not that great of a ditch, and the planners didn't think it was necessary.
I'm going to chime in first, just before I lose the thought. Following on Commissioner Teta's point about if we were to take out those three or four houses, then you end up with a bad street scape. And to me, that's actually a worse thing to do, because you would have this gap along that street of, you know, three or four houses just not there. And given the quality of the architecture in this project, I think that would be a shame to lose that, so. Commissioner Flack.
I guess I'm not as concerned about the gaps in the street appearance. My concern My concern more is, is relating to the safety of the houses in terms of flooding, and I assume that, I'm making an assumption, that all the plans have basements. And so, my concern was that, yes, 100 years, we can't imagine, but we couldn't imagine what happened when it did, either. So we don't know about the flooding part of it. My thought would be that as they construct the park, that will be part of the planning, since I know that the Parks Department and city planning has been looking into how the St. Brain goes through town. No doubt, they're also going to look and be aware of what this particular tributary can do, and I imagine, I'm, I'm going to assume again, which is a bad thing to do, that they will take the time to look at how this thing does wander and wander it a little different way, and that would negate the issue with the flooding. Now, the developer already has received approval from the Corps of Engineers to go ahead and put the road across, and I can't imagine that they would have allowed that and approved that without being cognizant of what that stream and tributary are going to do over time. I'm not as concerned about the wildlife having an issue and needing to have a berm. If it's me and I have that house, I want to see if the coyotes are coming, so I don't want that berm. I just want that fence, and I want it transparent with dog wire in it. That's my take on it. I think a berm doesn't really add anything to it, and wildlife can be fairly adaptable, and I bet the foxes move into the interior green space anyway. I know they do now in Longmont neighborhoods that are fully surrounded by houses. They figure it out, sometimes better than we do. So I, I don't think we need to amend that. I think, um, there'll be some prudence and some thoughtfulness done as the park is designed in the future. So I think that we need to proceed and, and to, um, I guess I would say that we need to approve, um, the number B with the conditions already, uh, suggested by staff.
So is that a motion to approve PZR 2016-8B?
It is.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Ben, did you want to chime in? I saw you raise your hand. That microphone over there doesn't do well for us.
It lights up green, but it won't let me speak. Chairman Shernick, oh, we actually have an engineer from our Public Works and Natural Resources, uh, department here, and, uh, he's a little, he's a little more well-versed in terms of the long-term plans for that, that southern piece of property, um, and perhaps he could shed a little bit more light on, on what will be proposed out there in the future. So I'll just turn it over to him.
So, yes, if, if we could hear about that before we even get a, get a second?
A second for discussion?
Oh, do we need a second for discussion?
Yeah, we will.
Oh, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Teta, seconds. So, let's hear from our, our engineer.
Commissioner Shernick and the members of the commission, Chris Huffer with Public Works and Natural Resources, um, and, uh, just as a little bit of background, I've been working on this project, uh, we started with Brian Schumacher in 2006 and have been working on this ever since, but, um, and now, um, Markel's been able to bring it forward and, uh, has a, a good plan to, um, actually develop it, so, um, but just a little bit of background also, um, as was brought up in the presentation earlier, um, Natural Resources does have the Dry Creek Park there, um, they have completed construction on the eastern portion of it. Uh, there is a master plan, uh, to bring that all the way to the west to what is gonna be Mountain Drive. Um, and, uh, through the previous developments, we have looked at, uh, a CLOMAR, a conditional letter of map revision, uh, for, um, Mountain Drive and the culvert underneath there, as well as the, uh, varying floodplains, as, has been talked about previously. And, uh, the area that we're looking at, I believe, will be future greenway, uh, as this goes forward. Uh, that has to go through the design process. Natural Resources is looking at that, uh, very closely, uh, for that design, uh, as well as, uh, Public Works Engineering, uh, for the floodplain, and, uh, we're very confident that the floodplain will be far enough away from those lots and that, uh, um, design of the greenway, as well as the park coming through there, will take into account, uh, the variation of, um, I don't want to say wetbacks, um, of wetland, um, as the, the ultimate Dry Creek channel is, is designed and, uh, constructed in there. So if you had any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Any questions? No, not at this time. So we do have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Goldberg?
Planner Ortiz? Ben, is the 41-foot, 6-inch variance to the property line or to the building?
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Goldberg, that's to the property line.
And presumably, the, um, building itself, the actual home itself, will be a touch further to the north, um, well...
12 more feet.
12 additional feet. Thank you. I must not have read that. Thanks, Ben.
Any further discussion?
I just want to do one more final comment on the wetlands. I, I don't think the issues, it has to do with foxes and things like that. They certainly will adapt. I think it's a more complex thing with, uh, wetlands are, are more of, you know, like they, it's a water quality, you know, they help to filter the water going directly into the St. Rain or wherever these will eventually end up. Yeah, it's important for nesting and, and different things like that, so, that's just one thing. And the other thing is that I don't also think that, uh, those three buildings should just be subtracted and leave like a tooth missing or something like that. I think that probably, a quality builder like Markel would probably replod it a little bit if they had to, or as Commissioner Pollin suggested, possibly some kind of berms or something like that. That's my feeling. That's why I would not necessarily feel comfortable passing this right now as it is, um, but, that's, uh, that's just my final comment.
Anything else? Shall we vote? Whoop. Yes, it's a B.
Is it too late? Have we, oh, were we already voting?
Uh, we're waiting for a vote. Okay. So that passes, uh, five to two, uh, with Commissioners Pollin and Bruno dissenting. So, thank you very much to the applicants, um, and let me read the appeal process announcement. This item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating how the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period. The appeal period begins Thursday, March 17, 8:00 a.m., and ends Wednesday, March 23, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you, Ben. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's, uh, hanging in there. This is a public hearing, so we have a final call for the public invited to be heard, if I remember right. Let me get back to my agenda.
I think I'm gonna stick to the...
Yes, item nine, final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody in the public who would like to come forward and speak to something that was not on tonight's agenda? Not seeing anybody. We will close the public invited to be heard. Any items from the commission? No items from the commission. Any items from Council Representative Bonnie Finley? None. Items from the Development Services manager? No items from...
None.
Okay. So our last item is adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.